Board meeting of October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you. The town of Burlington will be holding the October seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting as a hybrid meeting. The governor issued an executive order on March twelfth, two thousand and twenty, authorizing remote meetings per general law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty, and extended by chapter two of the Acts of two thousand and twenty-three, including the promoting of remote meetings and participation until March thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-five.
As always, members of the public are welcome to attend this in-person meeting. Please note that while an option for a vote and remote participation is being provided as a courtesy to the public, the meeting will not be suspended or terminated if technological problems interrupt the virtual broadcast. Members of the public with particular interest in any specific items on this agenda should make plans for in-person versus virtual attendance accordingly. Those seeking to attend are welcome, majoring to some of the following. TownofBurlington dot webex dot com is the URL. The beat number or access code is two three four two five seven zero nine one zero one. Our meeting password is one six four five. You can also join us by phone at six one seven three one five zero seven zero four. Please be aware that if you are using WebEx, we have found that the browser, the browser plugin to use it is rather buggy, and so we do recommend anybody online to download the free WebEx app, WebEx app onto your computer and participate within that as opposed to using your browser. We had some trouble in the past and we want to not have that happen tonight. We also ask that if you're participating remotely, please raise your hand in the WebEx, and staff will send you a request to unmute at the appropriate time. The meeting is being broadcast on the BCAT government channel. You can find it on Tom Cast seven nine, Fox ten fifteen, and Verizon point one. We're also streaming a Facebook Live on the BCAT government Facebook page.
Thank you, Liz. We're going to have continuces. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would like to make a motion to take items seven C and seven D together and out of order for discussion purposes.
Second.
Okay, we're doing a roll call tonight?
Gaffney?
Yes.
LaRue?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Sutherland, yes.
Okay, one, two, three, four, five, six, zero. Thank you. We have item seven C is a continued public hearing, application for approval of special permit pursuant to four point two point six point ten restaurant, fast food, and takeout of the zoning bylaws. Two seventy-one Cambridge Street Arc Projects and Company LLC is the applicant, and seven D is a continuing public hearing, excuse me, application for approval of site plans, two seventy-one Cambridge Street Arc Projects and Company LLC.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue these items to the planning board meeting of November seventh, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
LaRue?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, that's a six, zero.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take item seven E for discussion purposes.
Second.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
LaRue?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yep.
Six, zero, thank you. Seven C, seven E is a continued public hearing amendment to Article Three districts, Article Four use regulations, and Article Ten miscellaneous and special regulations of the zoning bylaws allowing recreational marijuana dispensaries in a new marijuana retail zoning overlay district submitted by Alex Ruffield, town meeting member precinct five, on behalf of Will Seaguard. Staff, any comments?
So as far as internal progress on this, as far as the town side is, so we are having a subcommittee meeting of different elected officials to discuss how the town wants to approach this topic. And so I had an internal meeting this week with just staff about kind of their protocols, things that they need to know about, so that when we bring all the elected officials together, we can have a productive meeting, all the on the same page. Next week, I will be emailing people on the subcommittee, which includes planning board, planning board, meeting members, having hours, and I get the public here, all these public hearings, so all be time for public comment. So, you know, that is, that's the stats, so next week.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'd just like to make a comment. I'm a little bit concerned about the forming of this committee that involves so many electeds before we have decided how to take the pulse of Burlington residents. I don't want, sometimes you form a committee, everybody gets together, and it's almost like a self-fulfilling prophecy, you're all working on something, and yet we don't know if we really want to work on what we've decided to work on. That doesn't make sense, but I really think the first step is to figure out how we find out what Burlington residents want, and I don't want to see this committee start working on something before we have an answer to that question.
I agree, and that is not.
I agree with Barbara.
That's not going to be part of the tasks of the, that's not one of the tasks of the committee is to create language or something or anything. It's literally, how do we figure out what the people of Burlington want?
Okay.
What are the, you know, benefits, costs and benefits to the town, and both direct and indirect?
Okay.
So it's, if you, you are right on track.
Thank you.
Yeah, so no zoning work yet, until we figure out some sort of, I mean, when the town voted it down, it was per a vote, and then town meeting validated that.
It was during a presidential election, too.
So we would look for something similar to get a very high
Right.
validation, not just one-sided, it would have to be
Right.
something from our voters, which I haven't heard of anything personally from anybody else, so it seems to be, we don't typically vote or work on something that's just one person says, I think we should really do it. We try to get a lot of data on that, so I would agree with that a hundred percent. All right, may I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this item to the planning board meeting of November seventh, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
LaRue?
Yes.
And Covino?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, six, zero, thank you. All right, is there anyone here in the audience online who is to speak on an item that is not on our agenda this evening? None? Okay, seeing none. Announcements?
Shredding Day will be this Saturday, October nineteenth, from nine AM to noon at the Town Hall parking lot. The Sculpture Park Committee will be meeting Tuesday, October twenty-second, at eight AM, and that's going to be via WebEx. The Town Center Signage Subcommittee will be meeting next Thursday, October twenty-fourth, at nine AM via Zoom, and I would like to share my screen regarding the upcoming election and the details specifically for Burlington. And this is, comes straight from the town clerk's website. You can find this, if you go into their office, they have this in paper form, you can find it here on their, their website. So, Election Day is November fifth, and that's, and you can vote at Burlington High School from six AM to eight PM. Early in-person voting is October nineteenth and November first during regular business hours, that you can see here on the screen, and that's the, that's right here in this room, in the Town Hall main hearing room. Mail-in voting, you need to mail back your vote by October twenty-eighth, and the last day for voter registration is Saturday, October twenty-sixth. So again, if you have any questions or want to have, find out more information about the election, please contact the clerk's office or go to their website.
Thank you, Ms. LaRue.
Oh, I just, I meant when he's all done with the announcements.
Oh, there are more announcements?
Sorry.
Okay, there are more? Okay, yep.
Oh, I guess we don't. Okay, yes, I did want to add one announcement, thank you, Mr. Chair, to let everybody know that the Third Annual Pumpkin Painting Party at the Sculpture Park will be this Saturday, October nineteenth, at twelve PM, so you can go get your stuff shredded, and then you can come over and paint a pumpkin. So, hope to see everybody there, there'll be free donuts, free pumpkins, free painting supplies, while supplies last.
Thank you, Member LaRue. Any other members have additional announcements? Okay, seeing none. No legal notices of interest, no non approvals, administrative matters. Item A is a discussion of the Town Center signage bylaw by the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee.
Direction on me. I'm on, you're on, you can sign in. Good evening.
Good evening, please introduce yourselves.
Shari Ellis, Chair of the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee, and
Sally Willard, representing the signage. Thank you, the signer Subcommittee.
Thank you.
All right, so we're here tonight to just give you a brief, a very brief update as to where we are on the signage for the Town Center overlay. So we've been working with the consultant, UTIL, and we have done a lot of outreach to both businesses and also town staff, Economic Development Office, and so that's what we've been doing over the summer, and I know that Betsy was here prior and gave you a little bit of an update. We have received the actual guidelines, which I want to emphasize that these are guidelines that they have brought forward as a draft. Ultimately, I believe, they will be the planning boards, or underneath the guise of the planning board for, but it will be the Town Center signage district. So eventually, as we've talked about before, this is one district of all the signage in town, so we'll develop other districts as time goes on, but we're focused on this because this is a really already detailed area. So anyway, so we've reviewed briefly the design guidelines, we're not going to share them with you tonight because we were advised by our consultant to really wait for also the actual bylaw, which literally ten minutes ago, as I pulled into the parking lot, we got a copy up, so I haven't seen it. So we're going to be reviewing that over the next few days, and we would like to come back and present the entire thing to you. I did give you a copy, and I think Liz passed it out, of basically the outline or the contents of what is in the guidelines. Again, this is a draft, and you'll, you'll review it and make your comments, your thoughts, known, your input, all of that, and ultimately, it will be adopted as part of the bylaw we envision. So, that being said, I don't know if there are any particular questions at this juncture?
Staff, any comments?
All I would like to say is that I applaud this effort, and I'm really glad that this is, this is something that we needed to start, and, you know, Sally, you know, has been really carrying the torch, and now we're, I feel like it's finally coming to fruition, and so it's really exciting. I think that UTIL has been an outstanding partner, they're consultants, and from what I can see, they're on time and on budget, and I think it's wonderful to me.
Great, thank you. We'll start with the planning board members, if they have any comments. I know, Mr. Covino, you've been on
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'm kind of, this is, I think, the third signed bylaws attempt that I've been involved with, and I think this one's going to work.
Third time's a charm. You made Sally really happy.
And, and not only that, but I'm impressed that the core group, Betsy, Sally, Shari, is, has done a lot of outreach to the Town Center merchants, because as we have learned, just because it says so on the zoning bylaw doesn't necessarily mean it's going to happen anytime, anytime, anytime. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Ms. LaRue?
I'm very excited to read what you bring forward to us at our next meeting. As soon as you get that, if you could get it to us early, I'd like to be able to review it before you come, so I'm prepared.
That's, that's our goal, is we're, hope to review it. We have a meeting set up with UTIL the beginning of next week sometime, so hopefully, we'll review that, they'll take back our comments, and then they'll work with those, and, you know, hopefully, as soon as possible after that, we'll get it to you, because again, it's two documents that are very detailed. We'd love for you to really review them before we meet, so that's our
Looking forward to it, thank you.
Thank you. Member Sutherland?
I'm also, I'm excited to review this as well, I think this will be really good to have. I guess to Ernie's point, out of curiosity, what do you think has occurred or not occurred that has contributed to it not working before? Like, what do you think this time is making the difference?
So, we did a different approach, and taking it in the small chunk of districts, as opposed to doing the signage over the whole town, because
Okay.
there are many different aspects of our community, you know, we have the big tall rise buildings on Mall Road, and then we have the little town center, and so signage isn't one size fits all.
Yeah.
So by doing it in signage districts rather than zoning districts, I think that's the big difference.
Gotcha. Very good. Looking forward to it.
And I'm trying to think of your last name now, I don't know what it is. Is it still there?
I just want to say thank you for your efforts, because I know this has been an ongoing problem that no one has really wanted to tackle, and it looks like, I think this one will really work because of the players and doing it the way you're doing it, so thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Natola. Yeah, I would comment that, yeah, there's a lot of effort, I've been on two previous attempts at this, and again, we looked at it from a whole town standpoint, and putting in highway-type signs in the town center didn't work, and then putting town center signs in the highway didn't work either, and there were, there were multiple different people on there versus being town folk, so it, I think this has got a great opportunity. Just for Member Pembell, we're going through just an outline of the designed bylaw, Joe, and
Apologize.
If you have any comments, just, I know you've been on a couple of attempts as well, and this is just town center, so it's focused on that, and, you know, and that's going to be critical to town center, because as you go into that, and signage kind of gives, as you go through the gateway there, the first impression of that, so, you know, per our, no, thank you, so per, per the master plan, you know, kind of keeping a, in an old-time town center versus other parts of the town to keep the character there as well. Member Rappaport?
Nothing doubt at this time, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Pembell, any, any comments?
Nope.
We'll move on?
No.
Okay.
Real quick, I do want to give a shout out to the Chamber of Commerce and Rick Parker, because we now have, we, we've put together a survey, and he's been instrumental in getting that out to a lot of the businesses, as well as Melissa. So we've actually gotten some feedback, we had a couple of in-person focus groups, I guess you call them, and then also we sent out a survey. Not everybody can attend a focus group, so we're getting some good feedback from them, and we look forward to reading it all, so.
Great, thank you very much. May I have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to continue this item to the planning board meeting of November seventh, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
LaRue?
Yes.
And Pembell?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Seven, zero, thank you. Item B is a discussion Mall Road Mixed Use Zoning Districts, Melissa Tantakopoulos, Economic Development Director.
Thank you, Chairman Gaffney, my name is Melissa Tantakopoulos with the Economic Development Office, as you know. Chairman Gaffney, I was wondering, given our presentation is more of a discussion with the planning board, if you'd consider to put us as the last item, given that I know you have a business and some other maybe shorter duration items ahead of us?
I'd be happy to. Any complaints with that from the board? No, I think that's a great idea. So can I have a motion from someone in the board?
On the table, let's
Second.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
LaRue?
Yes.
And Pembell?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yep.
Seven, zero, thank you, thank you for the courtesy, we'll bring on
Thank you.
Yep. Item C, we've got the discussion of the accessory dwelling unit bylaw.
So this is, this is on me, so I have been meeting with town council, and drafting a bylaw, I don't have anything yet, but it is, it is coming. And one of the things that she informed me that I was not aware of, did not interpret it that way, was that we, it was her interpretation that we are not allowed to require the attachment to the principal dwellings. So, so I am going to, you know, ask the high mind of planners, but it is her opinion that because the definition is attached or detached according to the law, that you cannot
Can't choose one?
Yep, Ms. LaRue.
Can we reach out to the state for clarification?
Yes.
Okay.
So she has already reached out to the state regarding one thing, but I think it may be handled.
Because that, I think, would make a big difference to a lot of Burlington residents, and we need to make sure we get it right.
I agree, I agree, I agree.
Thank you.
Ms. Sutherland, go ahead.
No, nothing
Okay, Mr. Covino.
Not to be too picky, but if not attached, we require them to be within, to be in the instructions.
Ooh.
You know, they might want to be creative.
We should be creative, I like, I like it, I like it.
Any other members' comments? No? The only comment I would have, because our building inspector said we're going to have one meter, is that right? How does that work when you have two separate buildings?
I, that's, that's another good question to ask him, so I will reach out to him on that, so this is all, the whole stuff.
Maybe on the pole somewhere or something, I don't, you know, wouldn't, okay. Yep, and this is, this is something that is, again, per the state law, we have to have in place by February?
So that means January, Tom.
Yeah.
We don't, we don't really have to, but if
But, we don't.
And they'll do, people, they'll do whatever they want.
Conditions on that. Yes, go ahead. Sorry, yes, right. Ms. Sutherland, go ahead.
When it comes to a lot of the updates that have been made around groundwater, and will that, can that, will that automatically be applied to ADU as well?
Absolutely.
Do those bylaws have, or, you know, rules have anything to do with the size? Wasn't there like a size parameter?
The space size parameter, which
No, sorry, for like the, for the groundwater?
Oh, so basically, you cannot have anything in the, if your building is of a certain size, you cannot have anything in the estimated high groundwater to people, so that is another factor that people look at.
Yeah, can you just follow up with what that size is? Because given an ADU, most cases will not be the size of a traditional home, I'm concerned about if they do need to be able to meter, and there's digging and all that, and there's no update to stormwater management. I'm curious what we might want to consider when it comes to the ADU bylaw to manage the ongoing water issues in the town.
I can definitely look, I can look at our bylaw, but I can also look at our lean and conservation, she will definitely know.
That'd be great.
Perfect.
Oh, and sorry, one other, also, we might want to consider something about if they're like clearing trees to do such ADU, something for us to consider in the bylaw around replanting of trees, if you are clearing trees to implement.
Mr. Covino?
Yeah, I, I had another question, and that is, maybe get a clarification for me, could you consider the existing unit, the ADU, and then build, say you had a nine hundred square foot house?
Yeah.
Then build an eighteen hundred square foot house and call that the main unit, and the existing one was the ADU?
I feel like if you, I mean, Joe, you might have to reiterate, but I would say if you have a conforming lot, and that the larger house that you build is within the setbacks, and it meets the dimensional requirements, I don't see why you're not.
I mean, I assume they're going to have the, they'll have percentage requirements for what the accessory unit can be, right? As long as it meets all that, I don't see why it couldn't.
Yep.
Yeah, well, right now, it's nine hundred square feet, or half of the existing unit, whichever is small.
Yep.
So eighteen hundred square feet would be the largest house that you could add to a nine hundred square foot
Right.
existing house and call them.
And could that be, I'm going to raise my hand here, could, could that go to the Board of Appeals to, since it's dimensional, can you use the exception on that?
Good point.
I'm not sure, I, I'm not sure I follow that, though, because if, if someone were building a larger house on the same property and turning that original, say, nine hundred square foot house, that, if that becomes the ADU, I don't think there's a limit on what size the house that becomes the main house can be.
Hmm, good point, yeah.
On what Jess was saying, though, would it be possible in our bylaw, because we have things that pertain to houses of a certain height, size, or larger, can we combine those to the ADU and the main house, and the square footage of the two is what, where that triggers them?
Yes.
I don't know, but it makes sense, because it's water, and it doesn't matter what, what you're calling the additional square footage, or, and, you know, it's still displacing water.
Okay, good, all good comments. Okay. Yep, sorry about that, yep. Member Rappaport, any comment?
Take that as a no.
Okay. May I have a motion?
She have something? No, okay. I'd like to make a motion to continue this item to the planning board meeting of November seventh, two thousand and twenty-four.
Second.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
LaRue?
Yes.
And Pembell?
Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, seven, zero, thank you. All right, let's take matters of appointment. May I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to take items seven A and seven B together for discussion purposes.
Second.
Okay.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
LaRue?
Yes.
And Pembell? Yes.
Covino?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Seven, zero, thank you. Since this is a public hearing, application for approval of special permit pursuant to four point two point six point eleven restaurants of the zoning bylaw, seventy-five mil sex turnpike at Burlington Mall, Chocho Burlington LLC is the applicant. And, item G is discussion of request for approval of minor engineering change to seventy-five mil sex turnpike, Burlington Mall, Chocho Burlington LLC is also the applicant. Please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the board, for the record attorney Mark Vaughn with Reiman Bronstein, representing the applicant here tonight. Pleased to be before you, Sarah Eba, who is with VHB, a civil engineering firm of record for the project. Also, we have a few representatives that are participating remotely from afar, including Tony Lau and Ting Meng, who are with Chocho Hot Pot, the applicant, and I believe our architect is also on Jim Chen. So, here in connection with obviously special permit for a restaurant establishment that is looking to locate at the Burlington Mall, this is a restaurant that would be looking to locate in the same space that Johnny Rockets was located in, they'd actually be taking a portion of the space that was behind Johnny Rockets as well, some dry retail space that was there, so the restaurant would be a bit larger than what Johnny Rockets had for a floor plan, but, so Chocho Hot Pot is a, a, a new concept for Burlington, certainly. I'm not sure if any of you have been able to ever enjoy a hot pot restaurant, but, and I think that Tony can explain the concept probably a lot better than, than I can, but it's a Asian-themed communal dining experience where diners cook thinly sliced meat, seafood, vegetables, other ingredient, ingredients in a simmering pot of, of hot broth that is at their, at their station, if you would, and then the ingredients are then, once, once cooked, dipped in various sauces before being eaten. It's a very fun, interactive dining experience, and I know it's one that they're very excited about being able to, to bring here to Burlington. So, the restaurant would be a hundred and forty interior seats, they would all be interior seats, no exterior seats are proposed. Thank you, Caleb, but that, the plan that's up on the screen now represents the floor plan, where you would have an entry from the exterior of the, of the building, obviously similar to what Johnny Rockets had, it'd be an entry at that location, a very small A very small little entry vestibule that's provided there. I say it's 35 square feet, basically the size of a closet, where they're providing a, a more, um, kind of aesthetically appealing sense of entry into the, into the restaurant from the exterior. And then the mall also runs along the interior of the mall as well, where there would be an entrance from the, the interior of, of the mall, once you're inside the main mall building. So, as I said, it would be 140 seats in total, and in addition to the special permit for the, the restaurant concept itself, we did file the minor engineering change, which shows some aesthetic enhancements that we're looking to make to the front entry of the, of the space. So if you're familiar with how Johnny Rockets has been there, it's not the most inviting entry, and they have some architectural enhancements and other things, which I think we could, yeah, no, that's helpful, Caleb, but that shows the, the current entrance area right there. Those bollards would all remain correct, so, but the, the front sense of entry into the, the new restaurant space is something that they're looking to improve on with a series of aesthetic enhancements, which I think that we could walk the, the board quickly through. Again, this is the exterior of the restaurant in terms of new facade upgrades that are being added to the front. And then, Sarah, maybe you could just maybe touch upon some of the exterior elements that are being proposed there.
Sure. Uh, good evening, Sarah Eba from VHB, as Mark mentioned, the civil engineer on record. Again, looking at the facade of the building here, the bollards, as mentioned, will remain at that front of the sidewalk area. Those are proposed to remain untouched. So from existing conditions, what's changing is really a few of those low shrubs and the one tree will be removed from this front area. And as you can see, for the proposed conditions, they'll have pavers, different walkway paths for members of the mall, and people waiting for seats at their table can enjoy outside. They will have some raised planters that will act as seat walls and some proposed vegetation within those. Just to the right of the proposed amenities, in the top right corner here, there is an existing transformer out there that is proposed to remain. They all, will be proposing and installing a screen fence around that transformer, which we'll be sure to adhere to all the ever-source standards. So it'll have 10 feet of clearance in front and a clear path from the path of travel. There is also an existing bike rack located under existing conditions that will be relocated just to the right of these proposed amenity improvements, and one bench that will be removed, again replaced with some of these raised planters that will act as seat walls. In terms of other exterior improvements, there's a small amount of increase to impervious area, about 620 square feet. As shown on the site plan, we are proposing two small area drains within that, that'll discharge to a dry well for that runoff to discharge and infiltrate into the ground prior to overflow, uh, flow relief to the parking lot, similar to existing conditions.
We did meet all the departments to review this, and I know Conservation was, even though it's not within their jurisdiction, pleased to see that that, that drain was, was added to the, the plan. So, Tony, I don't know if you want to maybe introduce yourself and maybe talk a little bit about the restaurant, and I know you're very excited about being able to bring it here to Burlington, but.
Hi, yes. So, good evening, board. My name is Tony Lau with the Chocho Hot Pot. So I'm very excited to, you know, share about the Chocho Hot Pot. We are a premium all-you-can-eat hot pot restaurants, known for our individual pots where every guest can enjoy at their own dinner tables with some of our freshest ingredients, sourced locally. And currently, we already win the hearts of many's in Vancouver with our first Chocho location back in 2023, as well as our second store that has just recently opened up in Vancouver as well. So actually very excited to bring it into the, bringing it into the, the East Coast here for our Burlington locations that will be, you know, hopefully coming up next year to share the excitement for the fresh ingredients, as well as a place for people to gather, you know, whether if it's just for a hangout or a date night's out, it'll be a wonderful place for everybody to gather, sit, cook delicious meal, you know, and have a good time. And we have many more locations to come in Texas, as well as over in the West Coast as well. So overall, just very excited to, you know, hopefully welcome you guys to our table one day soon.
Thank you.
We do have some representative images of the floor plan as well, but, but obviously a significant investment into this space in terms of quality of the elements and certainly going to be.
Doesn't look like Johnny Rockets.
Yeah, different from Johnny Rockets, right. So with that, obviously be happy to answer any.
Thank you. Steph, comments?
Um, Steph, I have no comments or concerns with this application.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go the other way here with Ms. Natola. Any comments?
Hi. Could you tell me a little bit about, so the steam, like, is, is the seats that I'm seeing, the little round, is that where the, the plates go and they?
It's my to say that the, the individual hot pots at, at each of those places. Tony, may, I, I think you could probably explain it better than, than me, but the, as a, I know some of these concepts, it's a communal pot, where you have a large pot at a table and people contribute to it, whereas here, the concept is that they'd be individual pots at, at each diner's seat. Is that correct?
Yes, that's actually one of our uniqueness, that every single guest will have their own small individual pots. So there's no sharing, especially, you know, after the COVID, you know, everyone can enjoy their own pot instead of having a big communal pot.
Thank you. Um, I'm going to move over to Ms. Rappaport.
I'm excited for them to, to come to the community. I apologize, my voice is faltering, so I will leave the rest of the comments unless I have something pertinent to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rappaport. Mr. M. Pemba.
So I'm, looks like there's no outdoor seating here. This wouldn't make any sense, right? So.
Yeah, it's not the type of restaurant where the, the diner is outside, just the, the setup isn't for it, but.
What's the, do you have like an average time period that, that each one of the patrons basically stays? Is it longer than you would normally stay at a restaurant? Is it more of a process? Is there, you know, courses to it and?
Yeah. I, I actually, not the best to answer. Tony, I'm not sure, you, you heard the question, but the average length of stay for a diner, is it, um, you know, typical to your, your standard restaurant? Or what, what's the experience like from start to finish for a diner?
Yeah, so we offer an experience where dining can dine at our, at our all-you-can-eat concept for up to two hours. So that's a typical time that we offer. I would say some guests would stay for a little bit shorter than that, but we do have, you know, unlimited all-you-can-eat for a two-hour timeframe.
So it's, so it's, so it's limited to two hours?
Uh, yes, limited to two hour, but all you can eat within that timeframe.
Okay. All right, well, I mean, you're not changing the outside, we're not really, shouldn't be any concern to the, you know, to, to the outdoor area. Looks, looks actually like it's going to be a beautiful outdoor, you know, they're going to do a lot of enhancements, so, which we love.
It's pretty.
Yeah.
Ms. Sutherland, please.
Um, the little circles where like the hot plates go, so are, are those basically like giant coasters, like, or is that, will that actually get hot, the circle in the table?
The circle's a hole. Do you mind if I?
Yeah.
The circle's a hole. The pot goes in the hole. It's heated from underneath.
Okay.
You choose your broth and they put that in there, and then you go and you pick all your meats and your fruits and your veggies and all your noodles and stuff, and you put them in there and they all cook in like your own personalized.
So the bowl itself is hot? That goes in the hole?
Yeah, I, well, I think it's hot once it gets in there.
Okay.
They get it on off switch, it looks like.
Yeah, it doesn't start off hot.
Right. Yeah, no, that's, that's a, a great description, as I understand it as well. It, it's a, a, a station where it would remain hot while the bowl is there. Yeah.
How does this work with kids?
With, with.
With children.
With children?
supervise them.
Yeah. Keep your hands off.
They're not invited.
Tony, maybe want to talk about experience of children, just to make sure no, no issues in terms of their safety with bowls or?
Yes, uh, so, yes, they are induction unit. Now, it only works when the, um, uh, the metal pot is on top of the, of the induction well. Now, something unique about us is we also has a cover, what we call a pot cover, that actually protects it from, from people from accidentally touching the hot pot. So, uh, based on our experience, we have, uh, you know, definitely it was a, definitely it's a good add-on to prevent kids or anyone, you know, accidentally touching the, the hot pot itself. So that's something that we have taken into consideration to make sure that this is friendly for adults or child alike.
Great, yeah, I think just being in the mall, obviously, I think it will naturally attract family, so, I'm curious about that.
You can't put them in the pot, if that's what you want.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I am curious about that one.
Given that they deserve to be.
Yeah. Um, and my only other question is, so on the outside, so, and, I mean, I know the, the street view that Caleb brought up, I don't know how updated that is, but will there be any disturbance to the existing trees that were, that are out there now, or will those be utilized in the design? So the, sorry, if I could go through, the, that one tree just in the view to the left there, that one is proposed, yeah, it's a smaller tree, it's proposed to be removed. Okay. It will be replaced by a number of shrubs and small trees within the planters. Everything to the right, so the evergreen vegetation, that one cluster to the billion as well, all of that is proposed to remain.
Okay.
So that's just outside the limit of disturbance of the proposed exterior improvements.
And I think that photo also gives you a sense of that utility box that's there, not the most attractive thing.
Very attractive.
So I think the ability to kind of put a nice screen wall up to hide that is going to be a, a benefit.
And that, uh, the bike rack is just in the center of the screen, that will be relocated to just to the right, where those kind of, kind of low shrubs are. So those will be replaced with the bike racks as well.
Yeah, hold on, Ms. Natola, we're going to go over to Ms. LaRue.
I'm excited to try this, so welcome to Burlington. I'm assuming this is not going to have much of a takeout business, so I'm not going to ask about pickup spots. Correct me if I'm wrong. Do you intend to have valet parking?
I don't believe that there's any, uh, plan for valet parking.
Okay.
And I know the, the, I think that we would need to address that in the future if that was ever proposed.
I have no further questions.
Thank you. Mr. Covino.
To Steph, so this, this is also a minor engineering change, there's a change to the site, right, to the outside?
Yes.
And the outs, so is that, and I understand that's not just for this restaurant, it's just kind of tagged onto this restaurant, is that correct? Where this area is going to be for everybody in the mall? You have the new outside area? Is that?
So I guess the question would be, you know, there, you know, this applicant is making, you know, changes to the outside of the mall, is, I guess, you know, is that still public space, or is it kind of only for patrons, you know? Is Chocho in charge of maintaining it? Is it the mall? Like, I guess, is that kind of the question?
Yeah, and is there any seating at all out there, where people would actually take food and eat it?
Yeah.
Not from, not from this place, but from maybe other places, no?
I would assume that you could grab a burger in the food court and bring it out if you wanted, but there's no table seating and you're not going to be bringing out food from this restaurant.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I think Liz's description is accurate. I, I think it's technically part of the mall common space, but Chocho is going to be responsible for the, the maintenance of it. But it's not just limited to someone that is a patron of Chocho to, they want to sit there and look at their phone or read a book or something. I mean, it's open to all patrons.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Covino. Ms. Natola.
Yes, I just wanted to ask you, is that the, if you didn't want that on the menu, is there any other things on the menu? Like if you had a child that, like, can I just have chicken fingers or something like that? I'm just curious if there's something else if, with a family to have.
Tony, could you speak to that maybe? I, I think that there's some kind of à la carte items as well on the menu, is that correct?
Um, now, we do have a, also like a hot, uh, hot table, so aside from, um, what we have on the menu, let's say if kids comes in, we also have some item like dim sums, uh, some, uh, like pot stickers and wontons that are very popular with the kids. À la carte item, we do have a few of them, uh, options, but they are meant for hot pots, so to be cooked in a hot pot. While in terms of, you know, kids, uh, for, for younger kids, uh, we did find that some of the, like, dim sum items are very popular with them, uh, but of course, we, you know, we are open to taking into different consideration if there are other items that, you know, are, are, you know, very popular amongst the kids, where they, they want to have the options. It's something that we can consider to bring in as well.
Just curious.
Yeah, that's a good question.
Thank you, Ms. Natola. I, uh, my question, first question is, did I hear correctly that it's an increase of impervious surface?
Yeah.
By how much? I heard 900 feet, is that right?
Correct, it's about 620.
Close, 600.
600 feet impervious.
Yeah.
And so what are we doing to kind of mitigate that? Typically, we don't increase the impervious surface, we typically reduce it. So I know you talked about some sort of drainage, but is it going to be, um, is, you know, I'm just, I'm just concerned about the increase in impervious, just in general, where we typically don't, we look to, to decrease that.
Sure. So in terms of the overall impervious area on the mall parcel itself, it is so minuscule, it doesn't change the percentage of impervious area for the overall site. But based on this increase, we have provided that dry well for retaining and infiltrating at least just over the inch and a quarter over the impervious area increase. This impervious is all really disconnected as well, because it's from the small portion of the sidewalk leading to the front door to make sure it's accessible from the outside, and then these paver blocks and seat walls. So within the planters themselves, we'll be able to infiltrate through where it's planted, and each of the pavers will have the runoff then go to landscape area prior to being collected by the area drains that'll then infiltrate again into the, the ground.
Is there a way to mitigate that with, with not solid pavers? What I've seen on other places is that the pavers actually can have grass going in between them. What's that?
Impervious pavers.
Yeah, pervious pavers. It's just, it's just that we, yeah, I'm just shocked that we're, we're, you know, increasing the impervious. So is there ways to, if you have pervious pavers where you actually have kind of grass going through them, is that something that could happen here instead?
So I believe the intent is also to kind of make this space more open and available for use by the public as well, and patrons of the mall. So those permeable pavers where the grass kind of can grow through them, those are more used in situations where you want to have vehicular access through them, but don't want to use impervious panels. So those use, are used quite a lot with fire department access roads, so that they still look aesthetically pleasing, but can handle the strength of the vehicles. These pavers are small and, again, kind of intended so that people can walk around this area, be able to walk to the different seat walls and enjoy this outdoor space. Again, everything is disconnected. This is similar to other restaurant, small restaurant improvements at the mall specifically too, when individual tenants have come in and different patio areas or different changes to the outdoor spaces has resulted in a minor increase of impervious.
I think it's important to note too, Bill, that it, it's not all going to be impervious, it's, there's a healthy mix of, you know, pervious material as well, and, you know, we're trying to strike the right balance to.
Right, it's an increase, and I guess my concern is this, we come in here with the increase, and I haven't been keeping track of the other ones that have come in. I just don't remember the others coming in and saying they've increased the impervious. So typically, if we're going to start to do that on each one, as you said, it's a small for this one, but then you add them up all the way around the mall, then you start to talk big numbers there. So I guess that's just my concern, if, you know, we're allowing here, it's not typically something we do, um, to increase this as we go forward on the, all the concrete there. Yeah.
I'm not disagreeing with you, I just want to see.
Yeah, I'm just, just the principle of the increase, yeah.
No, I agree.
Yeah, thank you.
If I could as well, the, the zoning summary chart that we've included and highlighted in red, just to note the change, that does, again, show that there's no, the, the increase is so minor that the percentage, and this is calculated for the.
Total mall, yeah.
Um, the last project that Burlington Mall came to the planning board with was the legal seafood expansion. That was, their expansion took place of a permeable paver patio, so that also had an increase of impervious, which we provided, VHB was the engineer of record for that project as well, provided the drywall with a similar sizing for that, just in terms of past projects.
Yeah, and that was probably presented to us as another miniscule impervious, right? So now, as you start to, you start to add them up, because we only see them a little bit at a time and nibbling at this, is that, over the year, we probably have, probably a couple thousand feet, which maybe they start to get to percentages, so, just, I just keep the board aware of that as we have that coming through. Thank you, Mr. Cavino.
But to give due, due is due, there's been some additional little pocket parks and stuff added, so that's probably.
Yeah, those, those.
The overall.
Yeah, those are, those are carpeted, they have, they have indoor/outdoor carpeting on, it's actually, those aren't, it's not grass, on the pocket park, it would be great if it was grass, I mean, you have the maintenance on that.
The park.
Yeah, I'm still on purpose, yeah.
Yes.
No, but there's, there may be, there are spots on there that there are, you have plantings and things which weren't there before, and Stop and Shop was there, and the cinema was there, and, and things like that, going back a few years.
Quite a few.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. All right, this is a public meeting, are there any members of public to switch, speak on this matter? Staff?
I am seeing no one online.
Thank you, seeing none, may have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this matter.
Second.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
LaRue?
Yes.
And Pemba?
Yes.
Cavino?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Yeah, the, the only thing I'd say is, if we can start to keep track of this now, as they come in with the impervious, so we can start to see when we get nibbling, and we know at this particular point is insignificant, as we, as we add them up, they, they may get a bit more as we start to nibble. So is there another motion?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I just asked one question, actually, I, it's more of a confirmation, that they said there were no, there was no valet, but there's also no designated parking, right?
Tenant-specific, short-term parking, is that?
Any designated parking for the restaurant?
Yeah, not that, not that I'm aware of, it's not part of what's being proposed.
Okay.
Patron, too, though, right? There's no dedicated patron parking?
I don't believe there's any dedicated patron parking.
In general, for everybody, the patrons, the employees of the restaurant, everything.
Correct. My understanding is that there's certain locations at the mall where there's non-tenant specific, short-term parking, but there's.
I mean, just specifically for this, for this plant.
Correct.
Designate parking to this point, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of Chocho Burlington LLC for a special permit pursuant to Section 4.2.6.11, Restaurants of Article Four of the Town of Burlington zoning bylaws to permit the reuse of an existing tenant space for a new full-service restaurant, a property located in the general business BG in Aqua Forest A Districts at 75 Middlesex Turnpike Burlington Mall, subject to the terms and conditions contained in Exhibit A attached.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
LaRue?
Yes.
And Pemba?
Yes.
Cavino?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, that's a 7-0.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to approve the request of a minor engineering change for a property located at 75 Middlesex Turnpike to permit the construction of a 35 plus or minus square foot vestibule, building facade enhancements, new landscaping, and stormwater improvements, as reflected on the red line plan entitled Chocho Burlington Mall, prepared by Vanessa Hangan, Brussels, sorry, Inc., VHB, dated October 2nd, 2024, consisting of one sheet, subject to the following revisions, terms, and conditions.
Second.
Gaffney?
Yes.
Sutherland?
Yes.
LaRue?
Yes.
And Pemba?
Yes.
Cavino?
Yes.
Natola?
Yes.
Rappaport?
Yes.
Okay, this is 6B, this is a discussion item for the Mall Road Mixed Use Zoning District. Melissa Tinkopolis, the Economic Director, Development Director. Thank you.
Thank you. So handing out.
Thank you.
The most recent copies of Article Four, the language for the new mixed-use zoning. And then, wait, they're updating now, so I'm handing those out as well.
Thank you.
Although, we need to be, the.
Maybe you can just, one between those.
And. Thank you. Okay.
At this point, no. I think online, I think what we could do is. Share the map. Do you have the most recent map, though? Let me just, yeah, I don't know if you.
You sent it to your.
I'll send it to you now.
Thanks.
This is Charles Schwab?
There's anything else later on?
Yes, this is Schwab?
Just send it to me again.
I'll find out, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it is.
I think it's.
Either that or that is.
So that's why they're.
I think.
This is like Starbucks, Chipotle.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman Gaffney, Planning Board members, thanks for your time this evening to have a conversation about the mixed-use zoning. I know this board is well aware of the goals and the intention of the zoning initiative that the town is moving forward, but just for anyone who might be tuning in, my name is Melissa Tinkopolis, and I'm here this evening with Ted Brovitz, I'm part of our consulting team, and when, just to set the stage briefly, about two years ago, we started on a community-driven zoning initiative for the Mall Road Middlesex Turnpike corridor. This was to look at the long-term health and viability of the commercial district, and to better position us for long-term success, so that this engine, this amazing engine of commercial tax revenue, vitality, jobs, as well as services, remains that way, and remains kind of, kind of the centerpiece for Burlington's economic profile. So with that, we did, we worked with ULI Mass Development, and we created a concept plan that really started to look at law, land use, and how that, we could take that existing suburban development and use the power of zoning to unlock some of the development, while at the same time, really trying to achieve some of our community goals that had been outlined through our outreach, and the outreach really included more connectivity, enhanced open space, better public realm improvements along streets, corridors, as well as, you know, different contingents of the stakeholder group, but looked at more housing options and more sustainability over the course of time. So with that, we have, we've, you know, presented to this board the mixed-use zoning district, and it's called, in, what we plan to do, as you know, is to bring this to town meeting, and we really are here tonight to hear your comments. We will go through the actual document this evening, did not bring slides intentionally, so we can just go through Article 14. So I've already handed everyone the latest copy of Article 14, and for those maybe, you know, tuning in, we have the revised map, and I did not, ooh, and I will send it to Caleb, so that he can also, you know, share it online, but right now, my, sorry, my mobile device is not working well, so, one moment. Maybe they can see this if I hold it up. That's probably not the best way to do it, is it? Yeah, they have copies, but just for anyone who's watching at home. So, I will work on getting a digital copy up for people, anyone watching at home. So today, we have a pruned-back version of the mixed-use district. On October 29th, we'll be submitting to the town clerk this language, which is Article 14, so this is what we've been reviewing and considering. And if we take a look just on page one, what I'd like to do is just kind of walk you through the outline of what this new zoning district looks like, and then we'll have Ted walk through an example of a project. For, for a lot of people at home, I think we've been used to a project being presented to us by a developer on a parcel of land with an intention, already a preconceived idea, whether it's housing, whether it's a commercial building, or, you know, a restaurant in an existing space. In this case, as you know, Planning Board members, we are now saying, this is how we would like this area to shaped over time, and we're telling multiple property owners, these are our requirements as a Town of Burlington, as you move forward and bring projects before us, we will be asking you certain things, we are allowing you to do new things in this district, but we are also asking you to, for certain things in this district. We were able to meet with the Land Use Committee as well, and I know David Waddilla is here this evening, so he can enhance any of the comments or things that, you know, were discussed, but I'll reference some of the things that they brought off last night as well. So on page one, we just really have the purpose and the applicability. So this outlines why we are moving this district forward, and what the intention of it is. We have, you know, established the fact that we want more walkability, outdoor gathering spaces, and a diversity of businesses, and allowing for people to live, work, and play in this space. I will say from the outset, one piece that Land Use Committee had said that they'd like to see strengthened would be the sustainable, what? Sustainable design characteristics. I think they're having some technical difficulties, so we're just looking at that. So that is one thing to, you know, flag for this board. Moving on, through the process here, part of what we're doing is requiring streets and buffer zones, so we give more detailed explanation of how you relate to your next property, and that's where you have, on page three, you have transitional buffer zones, yes? Can we, can we, like, ask questions as we go along? Yes. These two don't match. Correct. So the one that's been handed to you is the updated one. And that building is, the one that you added, that is currently? That is the Fidelity Building. Oh. And we look to include that as a balance to the overall site, because the PDD is kind of what is inside the green, greenway there, but because it's a PDD, we did not change the zoning.
Isn't that the Schwab Building, not the Fidelity Building?
Is that the Schwab Building, not the, right next to Cabot Furnishings? Okay, so that one must be Schwab. Schwab.
Ah, Fidelity's over to the right, actually, over.
Is that right?
Yeah.
Am I getting confused?
It does, yeah, so Fidelity's right here.
Next to the Cabot is, is.
Oh, yeah, you're right, Fidelity's over there.
It's right there.
Yes, it's 60.
Exactly.
Exactly.
So that is what?
And then Fidelity is.
That is where you have the, the.
It goes up, right?
The train, the education.
Whatever that is. 60 Mall Road.
Maybe, Caleb, can you pull that up?
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to do.
Thank you.
Apologies for anybody at home, there seems to be a difference.
Yeah, I think it's where the eye doctor is, there, the eye.
The eye doctor place, I think, is here, isn't it?
It could be.
Yeah, the eye doctor is in this, this plaza.
There's Fidelity, then eye.
Yeah.
And Schwab.
I think this is like on a hill a little bit.
It is, and I, isn't there like a.
Find out what that is.
Lacy, an eye surgery place there?
So there's Schwab.
No, this is like. There's a bank.
The last entrance to Lady.
Yeah, yeah, keep on going down.
Across the street, this is where Schwab.
Schwab, keep on going.
Schwab is this little building right here.
Keep on going.
If you go, it's 60 Mall Road.
Keep on going.
It's that, it's that one that you can see right there.
Yeah, keep on going.
It's over here.
That, it's that, whatever that building is.
Oh, you're right.
What is that?
Yeah, that's 60.
Okay. What is that?
Yeah, it's the one on the hill.
Yeah.
As of, this is from April of '22, so.
Yeah.
I don't know if new science has gone up at that time, I can also look up.
It's a mystery building.
Yeah.
So the next one is.
And then you get to the plaza where, like, the Cabot, Starbucks, Chipotle.
Cabot's a small building.
I used to have, my, my first office was in that building.
That's the building you added to this? That's the building that has some redevelopment opportunity, I believe it's owned by RJ Kelly, and on that site has, this is additional redevelopment opportunity, so in terms of balancing it all, so if you can imagine it being a little bit of an extension across the PDD, which is the National Development's PDD, and then incorporated into the overall mix, that's kind of the rationale for including it.
Melissa, are you able to share that with me?
Yes.
Yeah, my phone was being odd, yeah.
The plaza, yeah, and then it's this building right here.
I think, okay, I got it now.
Melissa?
Yes.
Since we're looking at the map, can you tell me why in the district, District Ave is, is included but not the, I understand the buildings that are but District Ave or part of the PDD, but isn't District Ave itself a part of?
This is District Ave.
That is public right-of-way, in terms, public right-of-way, in terms of, it's not privately owned, as far as, I think from the engineering department, that is how we could determine that. I can go back and double-check that, Ernie, do you remember it being a private right-of-way?
Town-owned?
Town-owned.
No.
Okay.
Does the town, the town, they.
Like, he's under, right, why is this?
I don't know, as of the.
You can add to it.
For, for the purpose of the zoning, whether it's private or public, doesn't really matter,
it's basically that there are design standards that are attached to each different type of roadway, and because there's three parcels in the district that are in this district, we're providing access down through the District Avenue to service those, those, those properties. So they would, they would also be, you know, subject to certain streetscape enhancements as part of that, if they, if they are eventually developed.
So what's important, Ernie, I think what Ted's saying is that the roadway is pink, not with the expectation that that is going to be built, but really highlighting that, that dashed line, that, the black line, is labeled a commercial district street, and so when you go into your zoning, there are certain requirements for your building on a commercial street, so that helps, again, tell the developer what is expected on that frontage. Follow-up question on that? So this zoning would overrule anything outlined in the PDD? No. Only for those pink parcels. So like, if, if that street, to his point, is included. Mm-hmm. District Ave is included as a part of their PDD. Mm-hmm. So, I guess what we're imagining is that, you know, for example, a parcel here, let's see, this one here, for example, right here in the middle, is redeveloped, there'd be certain expectations for them to have a frontage, a certain setback, a certain amount of activity in that front facing on the commercial street.
For a commercial.
Right. Now, can we control if, you know, this PDD right next to it, they redevelop and they have a different frontage? I think what we'll be able to do is communicate a little bit more to tie it in, but it wouldn't be required through their PDD, because they have their own zoning. Yeah, okay. And so, that's a good example, so how to use this zoning. So for example, let's take them to the street, you know, the commercial street, so, when I say commercial street, that's labeled commercial street, so you would go to page 25 and 24, these are the types of street or cross-sections that would be, I, you know, what we're trying to achieve with a new redeveloped frontage. And a lot of that has already been done through the PDD, under National Development, some of. Now. 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 Now.
So like, if, if that street, to his point, is included?
Mm-hmm.
District Ave is included as a part of their PDD?
Mm-hmm.
So I guess what we're imagining is that, you know, for example, a parcel here, let's see, this one here, for example, right here in the middle, is redeveloped. There'd be certain expectations for them to have a frontage, a certain setback, a certain amount of activity in that front facing on the commercial street.
For a commercial.
Right. Now, can we control if, you know, this PDD right next to it, they redevelop and they have a different frontage? I think what we'll be able to do is communicate a little bit more to tie it in, but it wouldn't be required through their PDD because they have their own zoning.
Yeah, okay.
And so that's a good example, so how to use this zoning. So for example, let's take them to the street, you know, the commercial street. So when I say commercial street, that's labeled commercial street. So you would go to page 25 and 24. These are the types of street or cross-sections that would be, I, you know, what we're trying to achieve with a new redeveloped frontage. And a lot of that has already been done through the PDD under National Development, some of National Development. So it's kind of what we're bringing up is some of the best practices and making that clearer for people.
Right. I mean, if, let's take, for example, if Macy's, that the parcel in the back does get developed in the future, basically that segment, that, that, that's last segment of the roadway that goes down towards the Vine Brook, that would have to be upgraded. It'd have to be streetscape improvements, that would mean there'd be curbing, there would be street trees, there would be sidewalks, all to facilitate that new developer, complement that, you know, new development that may happen there in the future. So once, you know, once a developer picks a spot and decides he's going to do a certain type of building, they also have to think about the, the site plan itself and how, you know, the parking's going to be arranged, it's got to be to the side and to the rear, it's how the frontage is in terms of the building facades, you know, as it relates to the street, and then the streetscape improvements too. And, and basically what we've done is try to create a little bit of a setback between a building and the street or the right-of-way so that we can activate those frontages. We really want it to be a viable, vibrant, mixed-use district, and so we're providing some rooms, some space for that type of activity to happen.
Yes, Ms. LaRue.
And I'm not sure if this is a question you're going to be able to answer on the spot, you might have to get back to me, but I'm just trying to visualize what's possible, and that's difficult. Is there any way you could enumerate for me, if all of this were developed, what is the maximum amount of new office, business, square footage that's possible, and what is the possible number of housing units that could be achieved if it were fully developed? And if you don't know the answer to that, that's fine, I don't expect you to have a number right away, but that, I'm trying to figure out, once it does get developed, how dense that's going to be, how high those buildings are going to be, I'm trying to visualize it.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm having a hard time doing that, and I think that's what the people of Burlington are going to, going to want to know. What is this going to look like? How intense is it going to be? How dense?
So I think that, and that's.
How much more square footage?
That's, um, that's 100% understandable, and that's kind of where, I think, coming from a land use policy end and trying to create, you know, a new development pattern is a challenge because we are not the developers and property owners bringing you a project. We have, the idea is to set the table for some flexibility. So I think if we went to, the short answer is, the immediate numbers have not been calculated. We have had estimates by what we call, you know, these real estate analysts that help with a fiscal impact analysis, that's actually being finalized currently. And our understanding for where we are is the demand, this is based on demand versus any kind of allowance, is, in this area, approximately 1.3 million square feet can be developed. There is a demand for it, right? This is a mix of commercial and housing.
So the 1.3 million is not all one or the other, it's a mix?
It's a mix.
Right, okay.
And, and I'm going to have to go back to, you know, confirm these numbers, but I think the, the, the total number of everything was built out tomorrow was in the 700-unit zone. 700 residential units.
Okay, including 700 residential units.
Yeah, that 1.3, 1.5 demand is square footage. That's a mix of commercial, office, lab, and residential. I have to get the right breakdown for you, but then we did look at housing units, and that was in the 700-unit range.
Okay.
In this area.
No, it's a good question, thank you.
I'm sorry, how many square feet does a 700 units take up out of the 1.5?
I don't have the breakdown of percentages, and this is again based on demand. So demand being like, they could be, you know, a unit could be, you know, a studio unit or it's a three-bedroom unit, so that square footage changes. But what they're looking at, when you're looking at just the real estate demand, would be that, those are the numbers that we kind of used for a fiscal impact analysis. That's to really understand the, you know, the change in the cost, as well as the revenue benefit to change. I think the other piece of this is when a lot of people talk about height. If you go through the building heights, the maximum we have right now is six stories and 70 feet. Six stories and 70 feet for most of the residential. I believe the commercial.
The lab is eight.
And the lab is eight, which matches what we have for the innovation zone currently. So they are taller buildings, there's more density, but the building height is capped at 70 feet. There has been some talk about.
Except for?
Oh, sorry, except for the commercial.
Yeah.
And the commercial is very similar to what the planning board has approved through the special permit for National Development and their, and their PDD, those three additional buildings that were approved last year.
So it's.
And to put that in perspective.
Commercial, what's this, what is the, the height maximum for lab?
80.
80?
80.
Thank you.
Is that what we have, 80 feet?
Okay.
I have to look. So if you go to page, let's see, can you find it real quick?
And there could be a mix of these, like you could have, you could have.
It's 90 and 110.
Storefront or something on the bottom floor and housing above, and that still would be capped at 70. Okay, I think it's safe to assume we would not have residential on top of lab.
Eight stories, 110.
Well, and we still have to approve stuff.
Yes, but that is a safe.
It's on page 18.
So page 18 has?
No.
The lab.
Yes.
R and D building.
So it's eight stories, 110 overall. The, there's a lot of mechanicals, obviously, on lab buildings, so that typically is, would be like, you know, 30 feet at, you know, at, on average.
But the height limit does not apply to mechanical, or, or, right?
Height limit.
Section C-2. Height limits do not apply to mechanical stairwell housing.
Oh.
Roof mounted cellular radio.
Is that how we have it in the innovation?
No, it says the maximum height of 110 feet includes the rooftop mechanical equipment.
Yes.
Okay, so, so if we can look at C-2, does that conflict that?
Let me see, C-2, what page?
Page 11. And go to the, basically one sentence, I think, so it keeps on going, maybe second sentence.
Not applied to outdoor amenity spaces.
No, second, C-2, page 11, second sentence.
Page 11.
Second sentence.
Height does not. Height limits do not apply to outdoor amenity space such as decks, terraces, and related structures.
Next sentence.
Yep, section 14.3F, height limits do not apply to mechanical or stairwell housing, roof-mounted cellular radio or internet transmission equipment, vents, exhausts, solar panels, or small wind turbines, skylights, flagpoles, chimneys, cupolas, monuments, parapets.
So yeah, just to back up a little bit, so you're talking about mechanical stairwell, okay. And then you're talking about vents and exhausts, so those, that's typically from a, a lab space, that's what you see up on the?
Right.
Right.
On the roof. So this, you go back to the other one where it says it's, it is included with the height. So maybe there's a conflict there.
Yep, that's a good, I would say that was a good.
Yeah, because it does say it applies to building types in 4.8, which is the laboratory building.
Yep, no. So, and then I, just to clarify from my perspective, so the planning board, there's consensus from this board that it should not include it, or it should include it?
Well, I'm just going to comment here, if I may, and I'm the chairman, so I can say that.
Of course.
So, so I, I was actually looking at, at page 11 there, a little bit more detail with the height, and I know we had this conversation when we had Sheri's proposal coming in with height, and with chimneys or cupolas or monuments, parapet spires, if I go back to the, the Mormon temple on two, right? So they had that issue of, of a steeple and a, a monument on top of that. I would, I would say you really need to include all that, particularly you're looking at the small wind turbine, how high can that go? What's small?
Or a radio.
Flagpoles can go very high, bellies, chimneys, so I think what you want to do is include all that in the height of the building itself, because those can go up, you know, tens, twenties, hundreds of feet beyond the height. We've seen, I remember we had Oracle want to put a flagpole above the building, I think when I was on the Board of Appeals, they wanted to put that up 50, 60 feet height above, above the building itself.
And if it has merit, it can always go like 400.
That's right, from a dimensional standpoint, right.
To put it in perspective, the, the Charles River Building, it's the tallest building in town, that's 11 stories and about 175 feet tall at the top of the parapet, with all the mechanicals and so on.
Yeah.
So, just the question I was asking before too, and a different question, but I don't think anyone heard it, you couldn't have residential on top of a lab building, correct? Because the lab needs to have all the ventilation.
No, they have to be separate.
So they would be separate?
In fact, there's 150-foot setback between any residential or mixed-use building and a lab building.
Okay, okay. I'm, I know I'm going to have more.
Wait, could you, I know, could you just show that where that is? That setback for them? I just want us to continue to reference the page numbers, just to get familiar with the things that are located in this.
It's in the lab building, so it's on.
It's in the lab, on page 18.
Page 18, and it says, under 4.3.
Oh yeah, 4.3.
Yeah, 150-foot setback from residential.
So we had not envisioned this area as, although I have seen that, Barbara, the lab and residential combined, I, I think I saw it in Philadelphia. I'm sure, I haven't actually seen it, seen it in Kendall Square, they're more adjacent, but I had seen it stacked, which we are not. It was unusual, but we're not.
They're attached, separate buildings.
Yeah, they're attached but separate, but we are not currently allowing it, anything like that here.
Okay.
And that, if I understand it correctly, is not something that could be changed by the Board of Appeals? Or maybe it could be, if there's a setback from residential, that's a dimensional, no, that's a dimension, so it could be changed by the Board of Appeals?
So that, that is, if any dimensional.
Any dimension, yeah.
Can be changed by the Board of Appeals, again, you, Phil knows, you have to, you have to have some type.
Yeah, reason.
Ernie does as well, and.
Yeah, but as long as nobody appeals it, it doesn't matter. So you might want to add something that says, no one building will contain more, lab and residential, if that's what we're concerned.
Concerned about.
Is that what we?
If, yeah, if there's consensus on the board for those comments, that would be, that would be great, if that's, what I'm hearing is a consensus that.
I don't know, it's my concern, I don't know how the rest of the board members feel.
It'll be easier to sell it, town meeting.
Yeah, and I have, I have no objection to clarifying that it should not be one.
Okay.
That would be.
Yeah, I.
That's pretty straightforward, I don't think, personally, I don't think the market would demand something like that, but to make it clear.
You don't know what might happen in the future.
Right, to make it clear if that's not something we want.
Okay, let's, okay, anything else from a summary standpoint?
Is, is there anything in here that talks about, we get to a point where we have to consider, is there enough, and I brain dead at this point, but is there enough, like, sewer and water, like, infrastructure to support a fully built-out? Because I know at town meeting, it'll be a question about the infrastructure, and if we're able to support the full plan? So is there like a?
An analysis currently?
Analysis and a, what the plan will be if it's like completely maximized?
To enhance it if need be.
Clarifying it would be on the developer to foot that bill?
I would say that, yes, kind of currently how projects are reviewed with engineering, they look at the draw on all the utilities, and then there's a requirement from the developer to, you know, augment those if need be. And that kind of happened recently with, I think, the Broad Institute. Norbloom needed to make an additional connection for, I think it was the natural gas line, which they paid for, which we did not have sufficient access to, and they ended up paying for it. And that is part of kind of the review process, not only, you know, the departmental, but through planning. In addition, we have gone through with Tom Hayes, just kind of in general, to see if we have any weak links or anything that needs, you know, I would say, attention in the more short term for any even immediate development. And he said that this area has been actually, I don't want to say renovated, but there was some, you know, everything is in good working order, he said, and there wasn't anything that he saw that would be, limit the capacity for building in this corridor at this point.
And I can also add to that, during most of the development process and applicants come to us, you know, during the building permit process, a lot of, we have a sewer allocation that, that new buildings need to pay into, so, you know, basically they're paying into a fund to upgrade the infrastructure that it needs to have, and it depends upon the use. So if you're opening up a brand-new, you know, restaurant, that's, that's more because you're going to have more capacity. So there's kind of, there's measures that are kind of built in.
I think those will, those will be important points.
Is that cost structure, has that evolved over time, or is that a set?
So I, so that would be a question for Megan Kellner, should the system, M.J., should do the system check for that? And I can ask her how those are determined, but I think there is a standard by which they use it, might be some sort of state standard, but I don't have to tell my head, I can look into it, but I assure you, there is a, there's something.
It was, it was an MWRA mandate at one time, that we had to take X amount of gallons of INI influ and infiltration out of the system for every gallon we put in. And then I know the town went to the MWRA and got that reduced, I, I think it was like 10 gallons for every one gallon we put in, and then they got it down to five for everyone. And now I'm not even sure what it is.
Well, is the, is the, that, my question was, is the INI program still in place?
Right.
Is that, isn't that the sewer allocation?
Mm-hmm.
That, yeah, she works on that every, through every project, Megan does.
Yes, yes. So I think if we can reach out to Megan Kellner, she will know, she is in charge of all of it, and so she will definitely.
So I think, I mean, I think it is in place, if it is what I think it, you know, it is in terms of the development, the development being required to pay into the sewer mitig.
She calls it sewer allocation.
She's, yeah, that's her short-term.
Yeah, so we have fairly large buildings like this, six stories, eight stories, that's going to be something different than we've, we've done across the board, so do we have the sewer capacity? I mean, you know, the infrastructure itself, whether they pay in or not, is it something we can handle?
Well, yeah, so if they don't, it gets denied on that, on that basis.
I mean, we, we often ask a developer to mitigate its impact by doing X, Y, and Z, whether it's widening the road or putting a signal in, so I would think that would fall into the same thing. If it doesn't fit, you can't build it unless he somehow corrects the.
Yeah, I know, don't know, have we ever seen that come through as a condition, or is that?
Oh yeah, no, as, to mitigate, you mean?
Well, to say whether, whether it meets it or doesn't meet it, and how they're going to mitigate, yeah.
Well, for instance, we, we've asked the developer to do a traffic study, right? And then if, it's okay, it's fine, then we do a peer review, and the peer review suggests you might want to think about upgrading this, but I think that was.
You're talking about water.
Yeah, but I'm just thinking water infiltration, yeah.
Yeah, water and sewer, he's talking about water and sewer.
Yeah.
Impact on the water and sewer, like the sewer system and the water system, but.
Other than, than.
I know.
Subdivision, house subdivision type.
Okay.
But, so we, we're also on, on track now for MWRA, right, for the water?
Right.
I think we're already connected.
Yeah, so, that's what I'm saying, so I mean, the water isn't, isn't really an issue anymore.
It's not unlimited, right?
The sewer.
I, I mean, I think that.
Almost.
I think it's, I mean, based on what, I mean, Tom is.
Tom is, Tom Hayes?
Tom Hayes is the engineer for the town, and, you know, he would be the first person to, you know, first person to come to us and say, well, these are issues in this area if you're proposing this, like. and say, well, these are issues in this area, and you're proposing this, like, we need to figure this out. And I think feedback we're getting from Melissa is that you've shown us kind of what we're looking to do, and he hasn't raised any red flags.
That's correct. So, one of the reports that, you know, is still kind of being finalized has been a fiscal impact analysis, and that's where we've come with the demand, the square footage demand, so that we can really estimate, okay, what is, you know, the dollar value for allowing additional development? What is the cost? And looking at that, we've obviously looked at, at least, I would say, still, like, kind of, because we don't have a project in front of us, on a superficial level, how our utilities are working, and that's where Tom Hayes has said that, you know, this is capable and everything's kind of in place and in good shape to move forward.
Let's go ahead and ask a question on Heidi a little bit, just to get off subject.
Yeah.
If I'm living on Lauralein, I'm at the end of the circle there, and that phantom, the newly added parcel, newly, we don't know what it is, is, is a lab building, that can be eight stories high, adjacent to residential?
This one?
Is that correct?
I would say, based on what we're saying, yes.
Yes, however, there is a transitional.
There's a transitional buffer.
Tell me about the, yeah.
So, you want to, want to do that as a.
Yeah, so it looks like there's a step back, how far away, right.
Yeah, if you look at the transitional buffer.
On page.
Page three.
Thank you.
So, it's on page three. So, the properties that are on the northern side of Mall Road, basically, they're up against, you know, pretty real predominant residential area. And we've heard from the neighbors, and they're concerned about the, the height, and they're concerned about the noise and so on. So, what we do is we provide a buffer zone. So, on the, on the perimeter of the properties on the north side, they have to be setback, their buildings have to be setback, and it's, it's sort of stepped back in sequence. So, let's say if you have a fifty, fifty foot high building, it can be, it can be thirty feet at fifty feet from the adjacent property, and it has to be stepped back from there, or set back even further if it's a taller building. There's also a landscape buffer, so that for that first twenty feet that's against the abutting residential property, there's got to be landscaping and other treatments that basically create a visual barrier.
Yeah. So, if I was to live on Lauralein, I'm at this zone, it could be, because you still could be up to eight feet, depending on if you just keep on increasing that setback, is that correct?
Well, it says the maximum.
At, but that's it, at the setback. So, if you go back and go to that angle of forty-five degrees, you're stepping up, but you're also stepping back, which means you're increasing that fifty feet to a hundred feet to two hundred feet.
So, how many feet is the setback if you were to build it all the way out to eight stories?
Update stories?
Yeah, one, two, three, four.
The setback from the residential.
Well, with the setback, it's going.
Two hundred feet? Is it linear?
Yeah, thirty.
Thirty feet, thirty feet back, thirty feet up, thirty back, thirty up. So, what is that?
Yeah.
Up to.
So.
So, thirty, thirty.
Thirty feet never changes, it's that height.
It's a minimum.
Right, but if they wanted to build an eight story.
So, it's an extra ninety feet setback.
How far back would.
Ninety feet setback for an eight story. Is that right?
From, oh, you mean that, that piece?
The peak.
The highest point?
Highest.
With how far back?
Yes.
Oh, I see what you're saying, at eight stories.
You're saying.
Ninety feet back.
Yeah, so if it's ninety feet tall.
No. It's, 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 yeah, so it's basically.
Hundred and twenty feet.
A frontage of my house on.
Oh, no, it's ninety feet.
Yeah.
I don't like that you added this parcel, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't want that there. I feel for the people that live on Lauralein and the other residential neighborhoods that are right there, I would not want this in my backyard.
Maybe the thing to do is say that lab spaces cannot be on the north side of, of the Mall Road, I mean.
But they still can be five stories high, they still can be, what, seventy feet, is it? They can still be seventy feet high instead of eighty feet high. I mean, I'm only one member.
Well, they can still be.
I liked the map before you had that in.
Yeah.
Liked it better.
Well, maybe, maybe.
That's a residential neighborhood.
They're getting pounded with helicopters from Leahy.
Yeah, none of the rest of this is abutting residential neighborhood.
Right.
Except that piece. Why would we do that to those people?
Well, again, I think what we're trying to do, again, the zoning is not just a carte blanche, like, yes, you get eight story high building by right.
Yeah.
So, it would come to the planning board, it would have to meet all the other requirements around open space, around setbacks, around step backs.
I understand.
Yeah, so I, so you would have to see a proposal.
That's the only one that's really an issue, she's saying.
Yeah.
So, why don't we just remove that? Is that a possibility?
What was the reason for adding?
The reason is for the balance, given both sides of the corridor of Mall Road, given that the PDD matches the, a lot of the intention of the mixed use, so that it creates kind of more symmetry across for the zoning, as well as it captures opportunity to enhance the greenway. And I think we felt that at that point, that.
But the greenway's not on that parcel. The greenway's on the parcel next to it.
Right, but it could be part of like a contribution to the greenway. So, I mean, this is, not everyone is on, the greenway's not on every parcel, but it would be.
But you can.
Something we point to as, to direct private investment.
No, I understand, I, so I appreciate the explanation.
Mm-hmm.
I don't like it.
Well, maybe, maybe.
It's the only parcel that really is.
That's residential.
Yeah.
Would you be as against it, though, if it was, because a part of the mix is also to allow for housing? What if that parcel went from an office space to an apartment?
Maybe it wouldn't, we don't know.
Right, but can we restrict that to be only housing?
But here's the problem.
I don't want to add, I don't want it, I don't.
I don't either.
Want this next, right this close to residential neighborhood. It's the only piece of this that abuts a single-family home neighborhood, and if that were my house, I wouldn't want this here, so why would I do it to those people?
But the problem is, this owner could sell it to a developer tomorrow and come in and build a lab space. At least being within this, we have control over the design.
They can't, right?
No, they can't.
It's not told for that.
Does it be, is that one BG?
I think, I really think that what we should do is just not allow labs on the north side of Mall Road.
But it's still could go to seventy.
It's such a small sliver of land, and it's all abutting, you know, residential neighborhood, so.
I mean, theoretically, yeah, it wouldn't allow for much development.
How much?
They have enough setback. I mean, in the, in the BG.
In a BG.
It's twenty, so minimum yard adjoining are, so there's twenty percent depth of lot, and then minimum building height is thirty feet, and then you go to eleven to thirty feet. Maximum building and structure height is thirty.
Thirty feet.
Thirty.
As opposed to seventy feet.
Yeah.
So, let's just remove it, just remove it. It's not that big, shouldn't be that big of a deal.
I mean, it's not our choice, but I would recommend that.
Well, if there's consensus from the planning board, what we'd like to do is bring it back for further analysis and see if there's a way to do it, but I guess I'd like to see through Chairman Gaffney if there's consensus through the board to remove it, or if the idea we could bring, you know, an alternative, you know, to the board.
Yeah, I would say, the consensus, as I'm hearing, is to remove it. If you have an alternative, knock yourself out and bring it to us.
Listen.
But you got to think, as a Burlington resident, who, I grew up in that area, and my folks hustle a lot, you can see the little house here, I'm on the map and you're on the map, right? You're on the map, yeah, you're close, though.
I'm close to it. I'm not close to that, but I wouldn't want it done to me.
Yeah, you know, so.
That's my feeling on it, so.
You know, I think we're also, Melissa, trying to help you, at least I am, looking at it, at what's going to pass the muster at town meeting.
Mm-hmm.
So, this is probably a practice town meeting for you.
Absolutely.
No, no, we appreciate it, that's why we're here going through this. So, I'm, I'm no, we are taking all the comments at this point. We don't have, I think we have, October twenty-ninth is kind of the final, and we need a final map as well for that, so we are working towards.
I'd remove it, I'd, I'd, that'd be in my.
You don't have the time, I would remove it, okay.
I do think town meeting members are very sensitive to how things impact existing neighborhoods.
Neighborhoods, absolutely.
Because they, they're.
Yeah, I remember one person.
They're just like these people.
I remember, I remember one, years ago, a gentleman who I worked with, and Dave, you know him, he said, you know, if you keep the commercial on this side of it, and you keep the residential on this side, he's okay with it, you know? So, I think that's the case here, you really, and I know if we try to do kind of middle housing, right, that's different than putting a seven, six or seven story building.
And we've always tried to protect the neighborhoods.
Even with the buffer.
Business creep. We had instances multiple times where a residential piece of property that was next to business, wanted to rezone to be commercial, and we, we said no, because that's creeping into the neighborhoods, and we don't want to do that.
Okay.
I mean, really, you've got, you know, four different properties. We've talked to all, I think, all the property owners, internally, some of them in multiple times, but you've got, you've got Bricksport, the corner of the Turnpike, you've got Coles, you've got the Joseph Bank Plaza, I don't think it actually has an actual name.
Mm-hmm.
And then you've got this, this other parcel at the end. And it just seems to me that that's ideal for sort of a mid-range mixed use. So, basically, as you're fronting on the Mall Road, at ground level, it would be commercial, giving, you know, businesses the best opportunity, because you've got good visibility, you've got good traffic counts. Then up above that or behind that could be more residential. But, you know, again, it gets down to the, you know, the buffer between the adjacent properties, the residents.
I'd keep it at two stories then, keep one level retail and keep one level residential up there, but that doesn't, it just, it just can't do that on this. So, again, I'd, short term, I'd remove it and.
Well, even a two-story building would be a big, you know, difference over what's out there today.
Understood, yep.
And the residential component of it would probably incentivize some revitalization of that area.
Right.
Yeah, understood.
Not now.
Yeah, but not there. Okay.
I just, if I wouldn't do it to my neighborhood, I'm not going to do it to their neighborhood.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay, thank you.
That's some good feedback there. So, I know you've gone through a lot of this stuff, I think you probably want to take some time and read through it. Again, my, my comment here would be page eleven, building height. I'd get rid of that sentence, height limits do not apply to, and get rid of that entire sentence, because it's, it's subjective, you've got things that could be very high on that, so that's something that.
So, that would put the mechanicals in the maximum.
It would be maximum height and the mechanicals, and that be consistent with the existing bylaws, and the thing that, the buildings that Sherry proposed as well, we said, you know, kind of that unknown heights of chimneys, copolas, flagpoles, wind turbines is interesting, and I would not.
It could happen.
That could be, how high, that could be small is, is not defined. So, that'd be my personal recommendation, I don't know if the rest of the board agrees with that.
I agree.
Compared to the ones out in the.
Exactly, exactly.
I agree too.
Okay.
So, I think the next piece, just to bring your attention to another thing that came up, at least with the Land Use Committee, would be the building types, starting on page thirteen, fourteen, fifteen. In particular, they kind of relate to the housing component. I know one member had, you know, kind of expressed concern about having a minimum lot size, and then on, for example, on page fourteen, you have a multifamily building design standard, and page fifteen, you have the mixed-use building design standard, roughly both maximum six stories, and one had a minimum lot size and one did not. And, you know, we, in discussion on that, we were thinking that neither of them should have necessarily a minimum lot size. And I guess I wanted to, you know, talk that through, or maybe Ted, you want to share that a little bit more?
Yeah, the intention from the beginning was to not to have minimum lot sizes. We don't need that, because there's very detailed standards for the buildings, the placement of the open space, and the access, and parking areas. So, you know, basically, depending on how big the building is, that's going to really dictate the amount of, the amount of land that you're going to need. And that's really the most efficient way of doing it, rather than having an arbitrary number or a floor ratio, you're basically saying, you know, this is the building I want to build, I know that I have to provide X number of square feet for open space, and X number of square feet for parking, and then screening and all that stuff, so we're really trying to make this as efficient as possible. So, the idea that, this is on, the minimum lot size on one of the building types is leftover from way back when we first started putting together the bylaw, so.
So, you'd want them both to be not required?
Yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, take a look at that, folks, on four point three, four point four, five, as you go down those pages, there's some to spend some time on.
Another thing that had come up with, I think, maybe our conservation agent on page seventeen, under figure four point seven, so in terms of the commercial buildings, the outdoor amenity space was less than what was required for multifamily.
Can you, that's page seventeen?
Page seventeen.
Two point six.
Two point six, thank you.
Thank you, sorry about that. Two point six, outdoor amenity space, was that ten percent?
Ten percent.
It's less than the general commercial building. Why?
General resident.
And general commercial.
Different commercial is fifteen percent minimum, and this is seventeen.
Why is that? Two point six.
Seventeen is.
Hey, can we just do twenty percent across the board? I think that was what conservation, you know, and staff had talked about, because multifamily, mixed-use, townhouse are all twenty percent. Commercial is already fifteen, so we bump that up to twenty, and then make four point seven, twenty percent too.
Okay, so you are comfortable.
We can do that.
I would just bump them all.
Well, I was just envisioning like the industrial district, where you've got a lot of small manufacturing buildings, one story.
I don't think we want that. We want outdoor amenity.
Well, we do, I mean, but typically, what they have is like, they have a setback of maybe twenty or thirty feet, that's grass, and they've got the parking to the side and in the building beyond that. I'm just trying to sort of make provisions for, you know, simpler developments. I mean, there's going to be some, you know, very sophisticated development down here in terms of mixed use and lab and so on, but there's also the opportunities for something not quite as, as elaborate, so.
It might be for the future, though.
That, yeah, that, actually, you know, I mean, we were looking at the much larger area for the zoning district, and so that would incorporate some of that industrial district, so if you want to make it twenty for now, I would say that's okay, but, you know, we start to encompass bigger areas where there's not as much, you know, density and investment.
Well, we also have to keep in mind that if we make it all twenty percent, the Board of Appeals can change that.
Yeah.
So, let's start with twenty percent, they might change it to fifteen.
Okay.
Or ten, if it comes to them, we don't know.
On the, on the building.
So, let's start at least with the higher number.
On the building heights, as I go along here, it's, so the pure residential's two and a half, right? Townhouses, you said the side setback, if they're connected, it's zero, if it's attached, it's fifteen. And then everything else is six stories. Is there, with, with the Charles River, that's eleven stories. The adjacent building to, to Charles River is, do we know how high that is? The adjacent building to Charles River is, do we know how high that is?
So what...
Which one, I'm sorry?
In a district, you're saying?
In a district.
In a district, yeah. The one next to, so you got the...
Oh, one's like four or five stories.
Four or five stories, and then the five, so...
Do we have anything six?
Yeah, what is residence then?
Oh.
American residence, and I feel like that might be...
Yeah, by six, five.
That might be five, but I think that is, when I think of this mixture, that height is what I envision.
Often, yeah.
I think you're right.
Oftentimes, well, oftentimes, developers that are working on these projects, they talk about a five over two. So that's the five stories of living over two, kind of deck-like parking situation. And that generally works because of the building material. You guys have, you heard this probably several times from, you know, the more recent projects, but that's kind of been the sweet spot. So ours is actually a little shorter. I mean, because that would bring you a six to seven stories, to be honest. And the way we have it drafted right now is a little bit shorter. It's at six stories, for what it's worth. In terms of doing some other comps, we should get those comps.
But I don't see, in these, you know, if I look at, you know, the renderings, there's no parking underneath. So, is that, when we talk about that, are we requiring storefront underneath? I guess there's park, there'll be parking or storefront underneath? Do we get the six stories? And maybe what I'm thinking is, so people just get an idea. I don't think, I know I went to your workshop, you had there, I don't think anybody was envisioning, you know, the six-story buildings. I think they were thinking more of like a four-story.
They didn't like the height.
They didn't like the height of the workshops, right?
They didn't like the height.
Yeah. Well, and I've been, I think what I've been trying to communicate at the different, you know, town meeting updates, is that we are talking about density. So to achieve the 20% open space, we need to allow for the height. You cannot have both. Because if we're trying to open some open space, you know, let's say a lot, 80% of it you can develop and you have to put, you know, the building and the parking on and you're allowing for the 20%. To make a project feasible, it tends to, it has to go up. And that's kind of the sweet spot that we want to put together, the zoning that is also feasible, that something can get built under. It's, there, I think, we like the aspiration of, you know, more open space, smaller buildings, and commercial taxes, but that, I mean, I think that you cannot have all of that. So our trade-off is, you know, the density factor. And I think what we've also tried to be mindful of is a smart-growth mentality. So, when we talked about this last night with land use, you know, part of what's really rooted in this plan is a smart-growth approach, which is not only more resilient, more sustainable, it has the well-being of proximity of uses. You're using existing asphalt, you're opening some of that asphalt to now be pervious. You are using kind of nature-based solutions to deal with heat island effects and stormwater. So, we're trying to build a lot of this in the platform of the zoning, but the trade-off, I would say, to that is then the density.
So that, to me, the trade-off is a character of the town, right? So now you're going, if it was...
But think about the area you're talking about.
And the area they're talking about, you have an 11-story and then you have, you don't have six stories. What I vision this is going to be going down 95 when you're in Stamford, Connecticut, right? Your base Burlington is now going to be a city. This is going to be six stories all the way along that car.
But this goes down.
Remember, the mall, the mall is...
I know. I grew up when it was a sample, I know exactly the topography.
So, I mean, the height of six feet, when it's already set down, six stories. Sorry, sorry, six stories, six stories, six levels.
I have no problem with six feet.
I mean, how much, how much are you going to see?
So, I'd love to have both.
I'm not just worried about...
Yeah, we're coming from the town, right?
Yeah, I'm not just worried about how it's going to highway.
The problem is, over time, what is that going to look like? From what it looks...
This is just, this is the first piece of it, right?
Yeah.
This is just the first nibble, because you've got past town meeting.
The problem is also, if you don't make economically feasible development and available there, then what you will end up with is kind of a desert.
Correct.
Eventually. So we have to, we have to compromise somewhere in between, as far as I can see. Maybe I'm wrong.
Right.
To get something that we like. Maybe there's some incentives that we can build in to allow higher buildings, stock lower, and then put some incentives in to, for open space or, you know...
Doesn't have to happen on every one, you know?
Parking underground or who...
But we can't stop it from happening on everyone. That's, it's within, it's allowed. So maybe it will, some, they're not all going to come out exactly the same. Not everyone's going to want to build a six-story building, not, you know, but...
But they're going to want your little slip-on money.
Most of them will, because that's going to be just, you know, smarter than they know.
The only thing I agree with Bill is you don't want to change the dynamic of the town to a city.
And that's... I'm sorry, sorry, can I interrupt? It's already changed.
Correct.
On that side of town, it has already changed. Open your eyes. From when you moved in here, it's much, much different than it was from when I moved in 50 years ago. It's much different.
It is, but it's still, it's still, it has, it's still got a small-town feeling.
Hold on, hold on, hold on.
You could certainly change it worse.
Hold on, let Ernie finish.
That's the beauty of it. I mean, we have a small town with a big city supporting the small town.
Yes.
I mean, it's, I mean, face it, it's here. I mean, Oracle's headquarters, East Coast headquarters, sitting right over there. I mean, the sun used to be...
Okay, Joe?
Yeah, I agree. We've got, we've got city-type users, but I don't, I don't believe that the character of our town has changed to a city. I don't believe that the, that the way it's been developed to this point in time has changed Burlington into a city. I don't, right? But I do think if we start raising the height of these buildings and going closer and closer to the residential areas with these heights and allowing them to be higher all around, incentivizing, we're not only allowing, we're basically incentivizing them to go higher. Why would you do that?
Okay.
You know, there's plenty, Burlington is a, we've already shown, it's probably the most desirable city, town.
You know, one of the folks before us.
One of the most, you know, desirable places to be. I think location-wise is enough to draw people to develop and to redevelop, to just, you know, and the vacancy rate is so low versus other places, they want to be here.
Location, location.
The amenities are here, everything is here, it's location, location, location. I don't think we need to incentivize, incentivize height in buildings to get, to get people to, you know, to redevelop.
Well, I think we know, at least in this particular location, if we don't do something, we're going to end up with either a mall full of restaurants and that's all, and they cannibalize each other, or you're going to end up with...
Vacancies.
Vacancies, or they're trying to do something that we, I think what Melissa is, from what I can see, is trying to do is get out and head ahead of that and trying to plan something that is, her talking to the developers, I assume, and landlord, is economically feasible but still is palatable to the town. I mean, I definitely don't want to see this happening in the town center, or this happening on, you know, Francis Wyman Road or Route 62 or wherever. But this is our, this is our economic pace for the town. This is where, this is where we want development to happen, isn't it? I mean...
Okay, Barbara?
I have two comments on that. Yeah, nobody wants to see it along Francis Wyman Road or in the Fox Hill District, but there are people who live here. There are people who live in this area, on South Bedford Street, on Laurel Hill Lane, on, I mean, where Jess lives, where I live, and it's close. So, I think we have to make sure that we're considering the effect on the residents that are nearby. I think with this reduced plan, I feel more comfortable with this. I'm not comfortable with extending that all the way up Mall Road. Maybe that'll change in the next 10 or 20 years and I might feel differently when I see how this looks. Right now, I'm glad that you're not proposing that because I would feel very uncomfortable with that. But when I look at this, and I'm listening to what Joe said and Tony Anne and Ernie, and I understand both perspectives. I understand the need to remain attractive to businesses. We rely on them for our tax base, but I also want to retain the character of our town. And the conclusion I come to this, on this, is that this needs to be a decision that is not made by this board of seven people. It has to be a decision that's made by a larger group of people. It's probably going to be made by town meeting, and that's where it should be. I don't want to make this decision for our town because it could very well change the character of the town dramatically, and I'm, I'm really torn about it.
Okay. Any, any other members?
I think, too, I couldn't agree with Ernie more. We, we're already actually at the point where we are being surpassed by Bedford. Bedford is making it easier to develop this. People are going to New Hampshire, it's getting, with people working from home, it's just, we are already at the point where if we want to continue to enjoy businesses paying 60% of our taxes, we need to make this economic change. I think the, the character in this area is, is business. It's, it's not residential. It is very much, now how do we transform it so it's not just a mall? It doesn't just become a desert. If we want to remain attractive, I mean, we have to really think about what, what can we allow that actually makes sense from a business perspective? Do we want 10 stories? Absolutely not. But at the same time, to Melissa's point, we have to think about what are developers going to think is economically viable? If they're like, ooh, that's, that is going to make my budget extremely tight, they're going to hop on over to Bedford, where you have a lot easier access.
What is Bedford?
No, hold on, I'm going to go...
But I think there's other ideas, not just that, like a performing arts center that could have, it can go high, but not that high, but bring in a big draw with all these restaurants to keep, I mean, there's other things that can come in at a lower height level and still draw a good amount of people to the town and to service all these restaurants that we talk about, plus the business part of it, and it'd be working for everybody. There's other towns that have that, and the draw is quite a bit when you talk about, you know, a lot of surrounding towns have that. That's one of the things we don't have on the Mall Road that I think would be a huge draw for Burlington.
Okay, Ms. Larue.
I want to know what Bedford's doing because I'm not seeing something like this happening in Bedford. So why are we losing businesses to Bedford? Do we know that? Melissa, is that something you can speak to? Because I don't see this happening, this type of development happening there. So what's going on?
So, again, we're changing the zoning. That doesn't mean that projects are going to come in immediately. It is incremental. And Bedford actually changed their...
Specifically to Bedford, I think.
Yeah, well, specifically to Bedford, they have a mixed-use zoning district where the Whole Foods is in Bedford. What had happened was they had put that in place, I think it was a time sequencing of, of the developer at the time, that's one property owner, and they were allowed to build residential. They opted not to at the time, and I'm not sure exactly the circumstances. So we've had a meeting with Tony Field to kind of review this in kind of historical context. And then he shared, you know, the history of what Bedford has been doing, and part of it has been, you know, the market demand in Bedford for that mixed use in that area has not been as strong. I will say, for us, we are noticing, we are not, I guess, unlike other neighbors, that we are all seeing an increase in commercial vacancy. That is a reality. We've heard this story, you know, nationwide, that given the remote work, obviously, people have been doing, pruning back on leases and moving towards what they call Class A office. So if we're going to have office space, we're going to go to the best of the best. What then happens for us is that it becomes fierce competition in terms of the power of place. What are, what does that place look like now that it's more competitive to either work from home and not go anywhere, or you go to your office? Are you going to your office in the middle of nowhere where you can't walk and you're driving from your car bubble to your work bubble, back to your home bubble? That is not the way people want to live anymore. So they want to get out, walk and have things to do, and that's the experiential part that we've been working on, actually.
Mr. Pimber.
I understand.
Mr. Pimber, please.
I'm, I'm missing, and I'm not being facetious, I guess I'm missing something. I feel like we have better amenities and we have a better destination than any place around, and at least 50 times better than Bedford does. And the location you're talking about, where the Whole Foods is, that's...
That's just where they did a mixed-use zoning...
But how high would that be? We're not even comparing a fruit to a fruit. We're looking at a vegetable to a fruit. It's not even on the same wavelength. In other words, I guess my point is this, there comes a point in time, I don't think anyone here has, has really seen bad, we, we think these are bad times, right? We think these are bad times, you know, a little bit of vacancy in the, in the, in the buildings right now. There's times, Ernie can remember, and I, and Bill can, you know, Bob is not that old, but...
I'm not that old.
There's times when there was real vacancies. And I, to be, be honest with you, Burlington is such a desirable place to be, when the vacancies start, we're going to be the one, one of the last ones to be hit, simply because of the restaurants that we've developed and all of the walking areas and the areas we've, that, you know, how Third Avenue has developed, how the district has developed. By the way, the district, we all know, is putting a lot of money in over there, and they're not building, everything's not going to be a high-rise. Everything's not going to be 80 feet, 90 feet tall. In other words, we're, there are areas that are being developed. The more space we put in to accommodate all these businesses, then, you know, when the economy turns really bad at some point in time, because it will, the worse we're going to get hit. So I don't, I don't really understand. I think it's more quality that we're looking at now, quality of life. And I think, you know, you said it actually, and I believe 100%, people want, nobody wants to be in the house anymore. They want to be back in the workplace. They want to be back in an environment where they can walk out of their business and go to a restaurant, and go to a little coffee shop, or go to a press cafe, or go to the Burlington Mall. This area is never, I don't, we don't have to be building, you know, 90-foot buildings to be able to keep desirability for businesses to be in Burlington. And I think the more 90-foot buildings we build, the less desirable it's going to be for the people that live in Burlington. And in, when, when things actually turn bad at some point in time, and they will, the less desirable it's going to be to live in Burlington, and the less desirable it's going to be to have a business in Burlington, because the vacancy rates are going to be way higher than they are if you maintain, you know, a demand. You have a demand, when, when you start increasing the supply of office space and building space and all this, all of a sudden, your, your supply is greater than your demand at some point in time. So I don't, I don't think that that's the way we're going to keep our town viable, is to continue to build higher and bigger and more. I think it's to build quality, and that's really what it's about.
So I want to wrap it up. So everyone's had a chance, Mr. Cavina, we'll try one more time through.
Okay, I'll try one more time. I was just thinking, as Joe was talking, way back when Harold DeLong was an attorney with Reon Broadstein, used to practice in front of this board, and every once in a while, he used to say to me, Ernie, Ernie, you guys are making it way too hard for people to come in here and build and whatever. And I used to say to him, Harold, they're knocking down the door to come in, you know? We've been meeting until, you know, 12:30 at night to take care of these projects. Well, number one, we're not, as you noticed, meeting until 12:30 anymore, which is good, but which also represents the fact that we're not getting the requests for developments that we used to. Well, one reason is because the town is quite built out. The other reason is because nobody's sure, as Joe says, what the heck's going on and when the bottom's going to fall out, so they're not building. But I also have to caution us, myself included, in the fact that I hear, and this is anecdotal, that when Bill Ricker advertises its property on the Middlesex Turnpike, or Bedford ACC advertises properties on Route 62, they say, "And close to the amenities in Burlington." So although we did allow them to build them, they didn't build them just for Burlington. They built them for whoever wants to use them, and surrounding towns are getting smart and taking advantage of that.
Yes, Ms. Larue.
I actually have a question for you, Melissa. So, I understand we have vacancies and we're concerned about more vacancies. What I want to know is, what is, are we losing business to surrounding towns, or are we in this position because the workforce has changed? Because one thing, if, if it's, if it's the latter, then I, you know, that's a different solution than if it's the former. If it's the former, we need to find out what other communities are offering that we're not. And when we look at surrounding communities, I don't see what they're offering that we aren't offering, and in fact, sometimes they're offering our offerings. So what is it, where are we losing out? So that we can figure out how to respond.
Okay. Well, I guess there's not a distinct pattern of, you know, businesses jumping from Burlington to Bedford or Bill Ricker. So what we've seen is when the leases have not renewed, they have either kind of, I guess, moved to some areas towards the inner ring, entering inside 128 to be closer with[1795.53] guess, moved to some areas towards the inner ring, entering inside 128 to be closer with higher, closer to the talent pool. So I know, I guess, Joe, you mentioned demand and having more businesses and everything. What really makes anything happen is the people. So people have the jobs, people create the demand. If you don't have the people, if you cannot create a place that is inviting for people to be, then the jobs do not want to be there. They do not opt to be there. So they opt to be in other locations. So I would say that, you know, Burlington's not alone in kind of the increase in the commercial. It's not an issue alone for Burlington because we're not doing the zoning today. You know, I think what they're, we're seeing is that we do, beyond the mall as a destination and the cool places that we have inside these bubbles, we do not have a centerpiece of true walkability, a true heart, or centerpiece of what is vital. So it has been the mall over the years, and that development form has worked for us for a long time. But it's the next generation, and it's over the course of the next 20-plus years, that we will be creating kind of that new, that new centerpiece, which now is more of a mall, but it's more exposed, and it has people there, and it has what we've been working on with this zoning, the open space. So we move from asphalt to a little higher density, but more green. We do more direction to the developers where we want streets and sidewalks, and we want more activated outdoor space. So those all pieces are, you know, the place-making. I was recently at the L-Wife redevelopment. So Health Peak is a REIT, like Alexandria and Boston Properties. They've been acquiring property over by the L-Wife Red Lion area. And Cambridge was like, hey, what are you guys doing? You're acquiring a lot of land. And the people were a little concerned. They're like, well, we're, you know, we're, you know, the people of Cambridge, you know, what are you doing? So they are doing much like what we're doing. They kind, but, you know, instead of it being developer-driven and that what is what caused a moratorium on development, they have now worked with the developer, worked with the different property owners, and outlined new zoning for the area so that they can be more intentional about the development coming in. And a key cornerstone of that is actually walkability and enhancing your green space connections, your greenways. And that, you know, again, is a 20 to, you know, 30-year more timeline. But I would say without, that's the peril, and that's what we're trying to create. And I guess Chairman Gaffney, I see David Waddilla here, and I don't know if it's okay to invite him if.
I was going to invite him once we finished up this.
That, I just thought that might be valuable point to have.
If I understand what you're saying, we are not losing businesses to competing towns so much as we are losing to societal change? And that what you're proposing, you think, is for the society of the future who wants something different than what we're offering now?
Correct. Market preferences have legitimately changed. So CBRE, those stats have. There is a second.
Now, Ms. Sutherland, go ahead.
Because May 6th, we sat down with the major developers in Burlington and said, what's happening? And they straight up said, your special permit process is a problem. So no, people aren't jumping from Burlington to Bedford, but when people are looking for a space, Bedford's easier, Bill Ricker's easier, and.
Their process is easier.
Their process, and therefore it's cheaper because you don't have to deal with the amount of time for a lawyer, for the fees.
But that's a process.
And to Ernie's point, to Ernie's point, they can still get our amenities without being in Burlington.
But, but not really.
They can't walk to them.
Not really. Joe, go ahead. Finish it up, if you.
Right, so, so, I mean, let's look at the reality of it. They're moving, when, as, as the office space, you know, becomes abundant and less people fill in the space, the, what happened was the cities got hit harder. They, they dropped their, their, their leases. Of course, the, we're never going to compete with Boston. We're never going to compete with Cambridge in, in those areas where these businesses really want to be, but they moved to Burlington because they were looking at cheaper space. So it was the next best thing. We had, you know, beautiful amenities, we had great work environments for them. But if, you know, if it was the same price in Boston and they had, you know, the ability to park and all the other things that they have, they probably still would have picked Boston. I mean, it's still Boston. We're not trying to be Boston, and I don't think we should try to be Boston, because the bottom line is, I don't think the answer to what you're saying is to build more space. I just think building more space is setting ourselves up for more failure in the future. I think, I think maybe look at the process, maybe look at the special permit process, if we can make that.
Part of process.
Well, I understand it, but that doesn't mean that we have to, you know, we don't have to draw in much higher and, you know, build, you know, build our, you know, build our, our commercial more closer into our residential, and we don't have to go higher with these things. We just, we need to look with how, how we can deal with it in, in other ways. I just feel like we're, like creating all this higher and bigger space, I feel like we're, we're still going to be Burlington in the long run, and it's going to be location, location, location. They're either going to want to be in Burlington or they're not going to want to be in Burlington. So if, if they don't want to be in Burlington and, and, you know, and, and we can't fill the space, we're going to be in a lot worse situation than we are now.
Ms. Natola, let's wrap it up.
Well, working in Cambridge for a long time, if I go back there now, because they moved the courthouse where I worked to Lowell and to Woburn, it's a ghost town. They had to take the high-rise, and they had to cut it down because it was really high and it stood out, and they had to put commercial property there. They could not rent that for a couple of years. It stayed vacant. And then to fix it and do all that, and now to walk back there just to go back to go see deeds, the, the other half, it, it's still vacant up and down the street that was very walkable. I think everybody got hit a little bit hard. I don't think it's just us. And at one time, that was a busy, busy, busy road, and it's no longer that busy even there.
Okay, I'm going to invite Mr. Waddilla. This is not a public hearing, but Mr. Waddilla, here, you have any comments if you want to come up, and if you come to the microphone. If you want to say no, that's fine. You've, you've stayed here, you can, we appreciate your time.
Hi, Dave Waddilla, citizen, and also the chair of the land use. I did actually write something down, but, oh wait, here it is. So, so we, we went through all of this last night, okay? So I would suggest maybe you have two visions in your mind, right? The mall has a lot of parking space, right? You know, and it's right to do something there, and then go look at its two neighbors, right? Third Ave and the district, right? Where we've developed a planned development in those areas. And it was easier there because it was one property owner, they could work with us, they could, you know, kind of define everything. Here, it's, you know, it's a jigsaw puzzle of owners. So how do you do that? I don't actually know. We struggled with some of the same things that you're struggling with tonight, last night. I just, I don't know if there's a great answer to any of this. I, I know, you know, Melissa's a professional, this is her view of how we should move forward. You know, one of the things is that, you know, to Joe's point, this is a sweet gem, right? There should be an ask from Burlington just to add residential into this space. But it's also a big question for everybody is, should we add residential into the space? So I, and I don't know the answer. Town meeting's going to have to answer that themselves, right? This is the proposal. We had some, you know, bend this, twist that, change this kind of input to it. But at the end of the day, the proposal's got to come in front of town meeting. I think the vision is to try and make it Third Avenue-esque. Does this get us there? I, I don't know, right? I'm very concerned with, you know, nobody wants to build commercial, everybody wants to build residential, so bam, does this just all go residential and that's the end of the story? And there's nothing that prevents any of the landowners from coming to Burlington to request a PDD themselves. So I don't know. It's, it's a tough question. I don't have any answers.
Yeah, no, thank you, Mr. Waddilla. And, you know, we, we, I've talked to people over the years, and one person said to me a number of years ago, what do you think as we go into the biotech, right? What's your thought on that? And I go, well, you know, it's the flavor of the month, right? And we've gone through this a number of different times, if the folks have been here a while, and it's always the next flavor of the month, this next flavor of the month, so we just got to be flexible, and we hit the biotech, and we're okay with that. Now we're hitting residential, but you don't want to put all your eggs in one basket, right?
Yeah, residential's always.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, with the sign, and I agree, you know, with the other members that, you know, folks are going elsewhere, folks are going up to New Hampshire, you know? They, they are going to Maine, you know, for, for this type of thing. They're going out, just like California people moving up to Oregon and Washington State. So, so, well, we, we wrapped it up, but if we, if, you're going to be before us again, right? So we're going to have more.
When we open the, the hearings for the town meeting articles.
Right. So multiple people want to try it again. You want to try one more round, and we're going to wrap it up, okay? Mr. Cavino.
Can I, can I ask, Melissa, what is the, what are you looking for from the planning board? Because we, we, as, as Barbara said, we're not making the decision. Town meeting is going to make the decision. So how we can give you the input that you want, what, what are you looking?
Well, we're, we'll be looking for a recommendation on the package. You know, Liz, as planning director, will come back, present the articles that are zoning bylaws, that the planning board is, along with the land use committee, you two boards are the most critical in-depth boards for the town. I brought this article, is zoning government's most significant regulating power. You guys have the power to work to create a new village, a new kind of vision for this area, which will work well. It will help feed and fund your capital projects, which you have over 400 million or more now. And so, yes, Ernie, that is, I think, kind of what I'm looking for is, at this point, input, and I think this has been a great discussion, and we will be back with a final proposal that Lisa Mead, our town council, has recommended that we finalize, and we have to put forward, and then you will give us a thumbs up or down, and then town meeting will give us a thumbs up or down.
Great, Ms. Laurel.
I have nothing.
Okay, Ms. Sutherland.
I defer to Liz. Liz had something to add.
Mr., I'm going one more time through the board, all right? Mr. Pemba.
Yeah, just one last thought, and I think, you know, we need to keep in mind, you know, we, there may not be the demand, we may not be hit to 1:00 in the morning now, but I, I would pretty much guarantee you, there's not a planning board in the state of Massachusetts, or probably in the country that's there until 1:00 o'clock. If you look at CNBC this morning, or you listen to what's going on, John Deere's laying off a ton of people, you know, Meta, Boeing, all the car dealers, you know, the car manufacturers, you know, the transport company, everybody's laying off right now. So there's, there's not a lot going on. So I don't want to interpret the fact that we're not busy right now, you know, to, to being that we're losing all this business to all these other locations.
All right, Ms. Natola.
I just want to thank you because I know you both have put in so much work, and even if I disagree on a height thing, I just don't want it to go unnoticed that you do great work, and I know you're trying to do what's best for the town. It's just that I have a different vision sometimes from going up here to now, and I just think to keep part of that, it, it is a happy medium, but I know your vision because you're a professional in that area. I do really take into consideration your thoughts with that because you do great work.
Okay, thank you. So my last comment would be that you've heard this from the board, you've heard things that we would recommend. What I would strongly recommend is that you, you take that to heart. I know we've done this before, we've spent many hours with you, and you've come back with the same language that you want to have. So I would just appreciate if you took that from the board, if we're recommending certain things, and we all agree with that, that might be something that you'd incur. If you come back with the same thing, I think that'd be frustrating to me that we spend all this time here and it's the same thing we saw before without our input. So I know you're looking very unusual, but just my experience is that, you know, when we say we spend hours and hours on this, and the same thing comes back with us, we had that with other, other boards, other applicants as well, so please take that into account. Liz, any last thoughts?
Yes, this town was built in the eighties. It was built out in the eighties as an area for, we have a mall and a lot of eighties-era office parks. We need to move on beyond eighties-era office parks, and this, you know, forget about like height and, you know, how much you can build. The, from my perspective, the public spaces that will be required to be created as part of this is greater than the height of the building and the, you know? And, you know, ultimately, you know, Joe, to your point, like, you know, ebbs and flows and all that stuff, but I feel like, you know, it will be, ultimately, it'll be up to the market, kind of, what, what gets built and when. So if the market says, you know, we won't, we won't, if there's too much office, we're not, we're not going to build it. One of the things that I think we didn't really get to, that I think is a really important point, is that Melissa's working with town council to figure out a mechanism to ensure that we don't make, this doesn't become an all-residential area, that there's still a predominant commercial, this is a predominant commercial sector. We're peppering in residential to make it a, you know, live, work, play area. But this is, this is not going to, you know? So we are, we are, there are mechanisms that we're trying to work on to assuage that fear.
Okay, great, thank you. So do I have a motion? You won't be, won't be coming back next meeting, you come back when you're ready with final.
Yes, and Chairman Gaffney, if I might, just in terms of a response to the not changing a proposal comment, you know, we had come to the planning board with 60 units per acre. It is now at 35 units per acre. We had come to the planning board with over 500 acres of a boundary.
Yeah, just from, I'm saying this from tonight's meeting.
From tonight's meeting, yes. But I just want to make, go on record that we've been responsive to the planning board, the land use committee, and ZBRC, and trying to find a medium that, again, is also viable in the, in the real world, too. So, thanks.
Do I have a motion?
So we are.
I guess we can convene, we don't think it's next meeting, you do have.
What meeting, do you, do you want November 7th or later?
So I would, I don't know, defer to Liz on what you think is best.
So basically, we are opening discussions for all zoning articles on November 7th.
Okay, there it is.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to continue this item to the planning board meeting on November 7th, 2024.
Second.
And we can, you don't need to roll call because Barbara, I mean, Brenda has left.
Oh, okay.
So let's just, so we have a motion, we have a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, 6-0-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, everyone.
See what we got next. Minutes, no minutes, other matters, discussion, 2025 meeting calendar.
So I have, Jen, actually, has provided us with just the first draft of our 2025 meeting schedule. There are some, some things that we need to work on and figure out. June 19th is Juneteenth, the hall is closed then. We're trying to, you know, January 2nd is the first Thursday of the month, so think about, think about that. And then also, school vacation, because I know that will probably be important to Jen, Jack, and myself as well, so.
When is that?
I am available February 20th.
So February 20th, and then April 17th?
No, Patriots Day is April 21st, so that would be, that should be fine.
Okay, good. So.
I have no plans for 2025.
Make them.
I do, but I come back before the February 20th meeting.
There's nothing here that conflicts for me.
March.
So I just, so I just want to make everybody aware of that, so look at that, we have to have this finalized before the end of the year, and, you know, Jen's amazing at keeping us up.
Okay, great, thank you.
So the next thing that we're, wanted to kind of go over is, we haven't had a planning board retreat or strategy session in a while, and so I think that we need to revive that tradition, and with the timing with, Barbara's talked about it, chair, my chair, so Wednesday, October 23rd, I have scheduled the downstairs of Grandview Farm.
That is next Wednesday.
Next Wednesday.
Is that?
Six.
It starts at 6:00. We will have food and go, you know, go through, I'll have an agenda for you.
What time is that at?
Six.
I'll probably be about 15 minutes late.
I'll have an agenda for you. And I'll be sending out things ahead of time for you guys to think about priorities-wise, so I just want to throw that one out there.
Okay.
Um, no, it's not, it's in the tavern room. And you go, and go in the front door, and you go to the left, the kitchen and the tavern, the official tavern.
They got the big, long table there.
Yeah, it's nice.
Oh, okay.
So, you know, so that's good, and we'll have, you know, catered by local business, which is great, town center, middle of housing, we need to schedule.
Well, actually, I. Well, actually, I forgot, I should have mentioned, we had a meeting. Ernie and Liz and I met with Mike-
Mike Murray Jr.
Yes, Mike Murray, about, just to sort of get some feedback, because they are the major property owner, that this is impacting, this part that we're proposing for January. And it was a very positive meeting. He was very, very interested and positive about what we were suggesting. He had some comments and some questions, but overall, I was, I was very pleased at his reaction to what we were proposing. So it was very, very good. So we're going to move forward, I think, with the original proposal, just those first two.
Those proposed areas.
Right.
She was talking Terry and-
Grant and Terry.
Grant and Terry.
And Mike actually brought up that they might be interested in other parcels as well, and we pointed out to him, "Well, if we create the zone and we create middle housing, any business can come forward and ask to change their zoning, and it'll be interesting to see if anyone does." So I think we're in good shape, and I'm hoping that at next meeting, we could have language.
Definitely. We'll have to submit it by the 29th.
Okay, that's for sure. Perfect.
And then I think we already, we already covered four.
Four, great. Thank you. Correspondence. Reports from Town Council? None. Subcommittee reports? Anybody's subcommittees? No subcommittees? Okay.
Talked about my two subcommittees.
All right. Unfinished business? New business? Anyone have new business? Nobody? May I have a motion?
A motion to join the meeting. Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed, abstained. 6-0-0. Thank you.